Thank you. Okay, today is September 2nd, 2020, and this is a special meeting of the Governing Board. Mrs. Ny, could you please do our roll call?
Barb Monson.
Here.
Laura Bruner.
Here.
David Newman.
Here.
Lindsay Love.
Here.
Karen Healy.
Here.
Thank you. Would you all please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Our first order of business is to approve the minutes of the August 26, 2020, regular board meeting. I have not heard that there have been any additions or corrections to those minutes, so could I please get a motion to approve?
Madam President, may I make a motion to approve the minutes of the August 26, 2020, regular board meeting as presented?
Aye, aye, on second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of approving the minutes of the August 26, 2020, regular board meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Next, we will have a presentation of the numerous citizens' comments that we have received, and Mr. Locke will be presenting.
Well, thank you, Madam President, members of the Board, and Dr. Castillo. During this time of social distancing, we have created an online opportunity for the public to provide feedback for items the Governing Board will address on any topic. The opportunity is promoted on our Board page, allowing for the convenience of providing feedback from the comfort of your home or smartphone. For now, this replaces the citizen comment section. They require individuals to come to the district to fill out a blue form prior to the start of the meeting. State statute prohibits the Governing Board from discussing an item that is not on the agenda, but they listen to concerns and often request staff follow-up on any questions. With the current format, we're able to provide Board members feedback in advance to give them time to process the information and ask questions of the district administration. This process also gives us time to sort responses by categories and provides a big-picture view of, in addition to all of the verbatim responses which you have received, and we post it on our website as well. We're providing the responses to the Governing Board and what the whole world will see on our website to maintain our transparency. Now, this past week, we heard from 1,187 people. Not surprising, the top response were issues related to school reopening. It's the topic du jour right now, as we all know, and you get those emails and phone calls yourself. This is pretty consistent with that. Let me just give you a little breakdown of how the responses came in. These are not going to add up to 100% because people could comment more than one category. An email may consist of two or three different categories. But we received 866, or 50 responses, or 59% who expressed an interest to open schools now. Again, this is not a survey. This is just a chance to give feedback to the district. 238 people, or 16%, seek to keep the current plan to reopen in-person instruction to the second quarter. Next, 110 responses, or 8%, asked what we allow parents to choose between an online or in-person instruction again. Some of those would have also obviously categorized with the expressing an interest in open schools now, obviously. 71 people, or 5%, request the hybrid model now. 61 people, or 4% of respondents, say they have left or are considering leaving CUSD. 15 people, or 1%, expressed an interest in keeping Google Classroom interactive option going forward. There were also a couple topics covered unrelated to school reopenings. 7% had other questions related to sports, extracurricular activities, data, mask, special education, those kinds of things. 2% of the 27 people want to express a thank you to the Board, expressing an appreciation for all the leadership you're providing, coming through a really tough issue here. So obviously, the numbers don't add up to 100%. That's because the people could offer, again, opinion on more than one subject, but you have everything verbatim. It's also listed on our webpage, and it's there for your review.
Thank you, Mr. Locke. I did notice I went ahead and tallied up all the comments, so that it appears as though if a comment touched on two separate topics, that that was duplicated in there. So we had about 300 and some duplicates that were listed in there, but of the 1,187. Are there any questions for Mr. Locke? I hope everyone had a chance to go through them and read them. Reading 1,400 takes quite a long time, and I do want to say I appreciate everyone's comments, and I appreciate you taking the time to express what you were feeling and what your opinion was about various things. I know that it is not the same as being here in person, but we do want to hear your comments, your concerns, your thoughts about what we're doing, and this aids in the transparency and allows us to hear what our constituents need and want. So, thank you very much. We will now need to get back to the agenda. We now will have a presentation on our safety protocols and mitigation strategies. This will be presented by Mr. Locke, Mrs. Hartley, and Mrs. Stewart.
Well, thank you, Madam President, members of the Board, and Dr. Castillo. It's my pleasure to team up with Lindsay Hartley and Amber Stewart to discuss the safety measures and mitigation plans we have put in place in anticipation of opening our schools. The mitigation plan was submitted to the state in July and posted on our website. We shared feedback with all of you in June after our CUSD Schools Reopening Task Force, consisting of approximately 40 people, developed a report with their recommendations. We've continued to review and enhance our safety plans after receiving additional information from county and state health officials, and direction, of course, from the Governing Board. We'd like to review those with a different lens tonight, if you will. All these objectives were designed to protect the health and safety of our staff and our students. We are in line with recommendations from Mayor Copa County and state health departments. I also should point out that we have had students in our building since August 5th. Through our onsite learning and special services, it's gone very well, as we went through a sort of a soft opening, if you will. Before I outline some of the specifics, I want to point out that our custodial staff underwent four hours of enhanced training specific to sanitizing for COVID-like symptoms. We can purchase the best product, but without proper procedures, our safety plan would be less effective. Our mitigation plan to protect staff and students calls for increased daily cleaning and disinfecting of high-traffic areas, doors, counters, places that are high-touch points, and very public. They are horizontal surfaces primarily. Obviously, our restrooms and health offices' touchpoints will be disinfected at least twice daily, and we provided guidelines and supplies for cleaning desks and tables for each classroom teacher. We use various machines. This is actually a photo of a fogger used on our buses to clean at the end of a day or beginning of a day, but we provided guidelines, and we're using big machines to cover big ground, if you will. The district designed signage to be very consistent across the district, promoting safe hygiene and handwashing that has been placed in all classroom sinks and restrooms. We've also closed all of our water fountains for safety reasons. Let's talk about transportation next. Many of our students ride a bus to and from schools every day. All buses have COVID reminder signs related to face coverings and the importance of washing hands. As each student enters the bus, the front of the bus, they'll be asked to sanitize their hands before boarding. And we're doing that already with the kids we're transporting in for special services. Drivers and students will be in face coverings. We'll have extras on each bus to hand out when coverings are missing. Students, take a look at the chart here. The students are going to be loaded from the very beginning to the back of the bus, moving forward to the front. All seats will be assigned, and siblings will sit together. Finally, drivers wipe down buses in between routes. All buses will be sanitized daily at the end of the day as well. Let's talk about when students and staff arrive at school. So enhanced protocols will include minimal access to the campus by those who are not students or staff. Schools have pre-designated entry and exit plans. The school will close and lock all gates that are not staffed for drop-off or pickup times. We will strictly enforce our policy of staff wearing identification badges. Staff and students, through their parents, of course, agree to an acknowledgement of staying home when they're ill and practicing proper safety protocol. Staff, in fact, acknowledge every time when you log in in the morning, or in the daytime, or when you go to screensaver, you acknowledge that you're in good health and you're prepared to do your job in that capacity. Hand sanitizer is available. It's in all of our classrooms, or at least two in the multipurpose rooms, cafeteria spaces, those kinds of things. We've also ordered several thousand face masks to go along with about 60,000 face coverings for those who don't have one. We have Plexiglas in place, and some of you are trying to get used to those with the Board, but you see it when you come into the Boardroom in the schools where people can kind of coalesce that we've got that Plexiglas to really try to force that distancing when that's needed. We also have discs available to kind of remind you to stay about six feet away when you're in a line, that kind of thing. And you'll see even in our faculty lounges, we've socially distanced to have some separation, and we're also encouraging staff to go ahead and eat in your rooms, pick conference rooms, get a little bit creative about where you're congregating to try to avoid being as part of a bigger group. You know, serving kids is a really big deal, something we do, really proud of, and our elementary lunch guidelines have adjusted to allow for staggered classroom arrival, and that's going to help us maintain more distancing when these kids are lining up. Students must wash their hands prior to arrival in the cafeteria. The ground is marked with footprints or stickers to ensure distancing, and the elementary service cafeteria staff is served all items to students versus self-selection. So we're serving you, there's fewer touchpoints and so forth. You'll notice that our salad bars are not going to exist like they have in the past, at least for a while, and everything's in feature will be cupped or packaged that you can take out of those items. All items will individually be packed. You see them right here in the central kitchen. They're preparing for the schools. There's less touchpoints down the road, so they're handling these things with masks and gloves, repairing those off, and the students will get a packet of food instead of picking out individual things. And the school's also not doing more sorting. We're doing that all efficiently at the central kitchen. Obviously, students can bring their lunches from home if they choose, and students may socially distance using cafeteria stage, outdoor areas as weather permits, and the schools can get a little bit creative in how they're doing that. Students may return to the classroom to eat with principal discretion and may alternate if social distancing is not available or able to be achieved. At the secondary level, much of the same, but in addition to the elementary safety recommendations, our cafeterias will remain open all day to allow students to pick up food outside of normal lunch periods to reduce number of students at any one time. We're going to obviously require handwashing or hand sanitizer prior to arrival in the cafeteria, and we've installed hand sanitizer stations at entrances to the cafeteria in your multipurpose room, which serves that when they're not serving food. We've encouraged students also to scan their IDs instead of entering their numbers by touchpoint. A scan will be a little bit safer. At lunch, again, all food items are going to be served packaged versus in open containers. We're offering alternative points of service outdoors to reduce congestion in cafeterias. Some of us as administrators and school boards over the years have helped, Brand New Schools, for example, help get food out those first few days. It'll resemble that a little bit. Let's talk about, next, about our very popular Kids Express childcare program. Our childcare program has actually been open to some extent since March 23. So we've been providing support to the children of essential workers and upwards of 500 children a day at a few of our sites daily. All children employees must wear face mask coverings, just the same as they wore when they were in school, we're very consistent, except during eating and active play. During check-in and checkout, parents' access is limited to drop-off and pickup table only. Signs and proper distance reminders are in place throughout the facilities. Handwashing and sanitizing is occurring before and after all student transitions during snack time and lunches. Students are separated with two at a table facing the same direction. You can kind of see some photos here, facing the same direction and about six feet apart, six feet apart, actually. Again, mandatory, students will wash their hands before and after all active play, as well as sanitizing all equipment between the groups. Staff are assigned to clean and sanitize high-touch areas multiple times a day. We're in the constant cleaning mode. Let's talk briefly about our heating and air conditioning systems. Our facilities are built to meet the requirements outlined in the American Society of Health Heating, Refrigeration, and Air Conditioning Engineer Standards for acceptable indoor air quality. The district also follows the recommendations set forth by the National Air Filtration Association Guidelines for schools. Now, all schools meet the MERV-8 Minimal Efficiency Reporting Value air filters in all HVAC applications. We are also upgrading to more efficient filters, some as high as MERV-13. Our systems automatically provide fresh air in the facility, and we're also forcing additional fresh air as well. I'm going to turn this over to Lindsay Love in a minute before we take questions, and then I'll... Pardon? And then I'll introduce Amber Stewart next. Is that okay?
Lindsay Hartley.
I said Lindsay Love. I'm sorry, Lindsay, you're already up there working.
I am.
Lindsay Love. I know. Thank you. Lindsay Hartley, MSN and RN, is the current Health Services Director for CUSD. Ms. Hartley has been practicing nursing for over 15 years. During this time, she has worked many years doing ER and bedside nursing before she began her administrative nursing career. In 2010, she managed the staff and day-to-day operations in a busy cardiology office and transitioned to the Director of Informatics in 2015. In 2017, in addition to her role as Director of Informatics, she was called upon to lead her hospital as the interim Director of Quality. Due to her success in leading the hospital's successful accreditation, she was promoted to the Director of Care Continuum in Clinical Informatics, hospital language, and continued in that role until moving to Arizona in 2018. Ms. Hartley has two teenage children, one who graduated from Perry High School this year, and one who is a junior this year. She began in CUSD in 2018 as the Health Services Director and ensures standardization in student health across the district. Since the pandemic started, Ms. Hartley has worked collaboratively with all departments to ensure all guidelines and best practices from federal, state, and local health authorities have been implemented throughout the district. As you can tell, we lean on her a lot. She is our resident health expert, so it's my pleasure to turn this over to Lindsay Hartley.
Thank you, Terri. Madam President, members of the Board, tonight I'm going to be discussing with you the health protocols that we already have in place across the district to mitigate the risk of exposure. Of course, we have put these in place already because we do have students on the campuses currently. The first thing I will talk about is our health hygiene education that we have put into place. Along with the signage across the district and in the schools, we also have videos to help teachers enforce these new normals as far as handwashing for, you know, young children, making sure they're doing it for long enough, how to use facial coverings properly, making sure they cover their coughs and sneezes, you know, and washing their hands afterwards. We're also going to have, we also have classroom resources available to help remind teachers of, you know, not letting kids share things without cleaning them, stuff like that. We also utilize additional resources from the state and local health agencies to help reinforce all these new health habits that are so important now. And of course, we will continue this health education throughout the entire year so we can build those healthy habits. The next thing I'm going to talk a little bit about is symptom screening. We look at some sites, I should say, some districts being able to screen individual kids coming into the school in the morning. Unfortunately, with the number of kids that we have, that's just not feasible. And upon the recommendation of the county health department, they have suggested that we have parents screen their own kids in the morning before they come and take their temperature, and make sure that they don't send them to school if they're sick, or on the bus if they're sick. This is also part of the acknowledgement that parents have to sign before bringing their children back to in-person learning. Staff must also screen themselves before coming to work, and they have an acknowledgement attestation on their computer workstations when they come to work to basically say that they are symptom-free and feeling well. And we really have just also been hitting home with all staff. Please stay home when you're sick. Don't come to work and potentially expose people. So, management of ill students and staff. On July 29th, when the health staff returned from summer break, we went through education and training with all of the health staff on all the changes that were coming for the health office, the day-to-day operations in the school, that were all affected by COVID. These were things such as how to put on your PPE properly, how to manage students with symptoms of COVID versus our regular chronically ill kids that may come to the health office, and also making sure that we have a place where the students isolated to where they can stay until their parent can come pick them up. Next, we ensured that every site administrator met with their district nurse and their health assistant to identify everything that needed to be done for the health office and the school in preparation for students, such as identifying that isolation spot and making sure that they had all the correct equipment. During that time, when we met with the principals, we also presented a guide for teachers that outlines what to do when they think a child is sick with COVID. So there's a lot of different things that we want to keep in the classroom that may not warrant a trip to the health office, so we don't risk exposure, but also the signs that they need to look for when they're looking at COVID symptoms. Part of the acknowledgement for kids to return in person was also to have parents pick up their kids within a reasonable timeframe if we do find that they've become ill during the day. And then also part of that, tracking ill students, the health office will track those students who are sent home due to illness, and then we can look at potential outbreaks if we know that, you know, a certain number of kids are absent or have been sent home So, reporting and tracking of positive COVID cases, when a report is received of a positive case, that can either come from the parents, that can come from a staff member, and it can come from the county health department. We work closely with the county health department to identify those who may have had contact with the positive case, and any details surrounding that case, such as social distancing, time together, whether they were wearing facial coverings or not. Once we've identified those people, we work with the county to see who needs to be identified as maybe having to quarantine for 14 days, or any others that would just need to be notified as being a potential exposure. The county at that time will also determine any other steps that we need to take as far as, you know, number of cases in a particular area. The site administrator or designee will be the one to notify those families or send out the notification. Once all those steps are taken, in order to be transparent, we will be providing on the CUSD website a line list of positive cases, so that the community will be able to see a number of cases that we have in the district. In addition to this reporting and tracking, we have requested to be a part of a program in the county to receive a Sofia II antigen testing machine. They have not been approved through the state yet, but it is a pilot program they're looking at doing, and we have requested to be a part of that so we could have the potential to test people for COVID with a rapid turnaround time of 15 minutes. And that's all I have for tonight. I think Terri's going to come back up.
You all know Amber Stewart. She is Director of Research and Assessment. She oversees the implementation of all K-12 district and state testing for CUSD, including professional development regarding best formative assessment practices to support instructional planning. Within research, Amber works with analysts to produce data visualizations in the business intelligence tool Tableau. These visualizations range from academic progress to journey 2025 metrics and enrollment trends. You all know Amber Stewart.
Mr. Locke?
Yes.
Would you, do you want us to ask our questions for Lindsay first, or should we wait till the entire presentation is done?
It's up to the Board.
I think, I have a couple of questions for Lindsay before we get started. I'm sorry. So, one question. When you're talking about the line list of positive cases, will these be identified as from what school they are from, or will it be just general for the entire district?
Well, we can do either-or. I think that what we had seen done in other districts was a line list by school, so I think that would probably make most sense with as large as our district is.
And because I do think that there are individuals within the school community, within each individual school community, that has, that may have anxiety concerning whether they have been in contact or even just in passing with someone, or perhaps shared a same space even with some time between where that person was and where they weren't were, and I know it won't be names on there. But I think that it would be, it would be a good idea to, just like we send out notices to classrooms, what we used to on little, you know, letters saying when, you know, fifth disease or measles or something else was identified by, you know, that a student had that in the classroom, so...
Right, and this won't replace those who need to be notified through that same means in, you know, in conjunction with what the county, what the county has to send. However, this additional layer, because what we found is, you know, word gets out, people talk about it, and, you know, it's out there, so, you know, that transparency, so people know, you know, if you were notified, you were affected, then, you know, you'll need to take those additional steps, but also the transparency of knowing, okay, yes, I heard about this case, but it obviously didn't affect me because, you know, I wasn't notified. So I think there's a little bit of, the transparency allows for people to understand that we work through those processes. If we didn't post those on the website, they would never know, you know, they'd be wondering exactly what you said. Was I in contact? Do I need to do something? Do I need to be notified?
Or do I need to be more careful and keep monitoring a little more closely?
Right, exactly.
Okay, are there any other questions from Ms. Love?
You mentioned the Sofia antigen machine. Did I say that right?
Yep, Sofia II antigen.
Sofia II antigen testing. How does that work? You said it was, it has a rapid turnaround. What does that mean in the world of COVID, number one?
Right.
And number two, this isn't something that we can, you know, enforce, like, you know, if a child came in, they felt sick, we couldn't, you know, test this child without, like, the consent of parents, or they forced the parents into that.
Right, and that's why I want to just, you know, reiterate that this pilot is in its infancy and hasn't really even been approved, but we did, you know, put in initially to say that we would be interested if they did it. The rapid turnaround time is 15 minutes, and it's because it's a saliva test. And it's not, obviously, as accurate as a PCR test, but it does allow the opportunity, if you had a large group of exposure that maybe you weren't sure if it was primary or secondary, you could test that group and, you know, truly identify any of those who, you know, maybe are positive and asymptomatic. who, you know, maybe are positive and asymptomatic. There is, you know, a margin, I think it said, don't quote me, but it was in the 96% or 97% rate for accuracy, so there is a margin of error there, but given the rapid turnaround time, it outweighs that, you know, the risk outweighs that for the errors.
Okay, and if, like, let's say you had somebody who did, like, test positive, would they have to follow up with their PCP or whoever?
They absolutely would have to follow that up with, you know, with a PCR test or following with their primary care provider.
Okay.
Yeah, this is just basically another tool for us to mitigate the risk of exposure. If we're able to say, you know, we had a classroom that may have been exposed, because, you know, again, sometimes we're not going to know timelines, especially if a kid is asymptomatic, so it would allow us to kind of get that, you know, general, what are we looking at as far as exposure, and if we could identify early any of those who potentially were positive and get them out of, you know, send them home and get them followed up on, we would eliminate that risk of exposure to others.
Okay, and then the next question I had was regarding the foggers, and I'm not sure if that's you or if that's Teri.
I don't know much about the foggers.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I just had a question, like, with the foggers on the bus, and I couldn't hear quite clearly, they're using the foggers at the beginning of the day, the end of the day, and in-between rides, or are they just limiting it to the beginning and end of the day?
Yeah, typically, beginning and end of the days, there's a wipe-down occurring by the driver in-between route, so they're doing a high school route, followed by an elementary route, followed by a junior high route, they will completely cleanse this by hand.
Okay.
These are for the, you know, at the end of the day, beginning of the day.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Mrs. Brunner, did you have a question?
Yes.
I was wondering if you could give me, like, the big picture of the communication piece of what you do regarding, so I know we're reporting things to the county.
Mm-hmm.
There's some kind of mode of communicating with families, and I'm not sure what that looks like exactly. I heard posted on the website. I think that's probably just the general cases at school, right?
Right, right.
And then I guess I just would like to know some more information about who gets notified, so for example, if the kid was on the bus, and according to the layout we have for the bus layout, it's definitely not six feet apart, so then, and they're going to probably be on there more than 10 minutes, so, like, any kid within that zone is, and then who walks past them and, you know, whatever. So, what does that look like for the kids who rode the bus with the kid who had the positive test? And then, does every kid in the class get notified? Like, if they, if a kid had strep, we usually send out notifications like Fiends, you know, at schools, when there's strep in a class. And so I'm wondering, like, what does that look like exactly? Like, what's the whole picture? Who gets what, and who's, how are they informed?
Yeah, so, really, the county is the one who decides, you know, who gets notified as a primary contact or secondary, so, but what they do look at, for instance, you mentioned the bus. If we looked at that and found that they weren't social distanced, but, you know, it was longer than 15 minutes, even if they had masks on, they would probably quarantine them for 14 days. In a classroom, however, you know, the, if the, depending on where the person was that was positive, there, you know, and in a perfect world, we'd be social distanced, so if everyone had their mask on and was social distanced, nobody would be considered a primary exposure and need to quarantine, but let's say that they were four feet apart instead of six, they did have masks on. The county may say those students within, you know, a certain area of that positive student would need to quarantine for 14 days, but truly, they identify based on the information we give them about where the student was, you know, they've often said that they're not as worried about, you know, passing in the hallways and stuff like that, because again, it's not for the duration of longer than 15 minutes. So, we would look at that classroom, who was primary contacts, if any, and then any secondary, if we needed to notify the family of, hey, there was a case in the class, you need to be extra diligent about monitoring. The communication mode could be anything from a phone call to those parents to a letter. I think it depends on the volume. You know, if we've had any situations up until this point, it's been a phone call, you know, if it's, you know, a staff and staff-type thing, so I think volume would indicate how that communication would go out.
So, if I heard you correctly, and please correct me if I misunderstood, you are saying that anyone within six feet for more than 15 minutes, even with masks, would probably be quarantined from the county? The county would make that call? And then the district would give in some kind of information out to the entire class?
Yep.
That there was an exposure in class?
Yep, and the county provides us with all of that information, with the letter we send, with resources. The county has, you know, many resources for families who, you know, may then have to be at home and quarantined for 14 days, and, you know, they have help with meals and, you know, different things like that. So, really, you know, us working with the county serves an even higher purpose than just telling them about a case. They help us so we can help those families as well.
And then just one more question on that topic, which is, if the teacher is found to have a positive case, what does that look like exactly? Are we allowing teachers to move around the room and be next to the child and point at something? And, you know, when we do the reading groups and they have the plexiglass, I'm assuming the teacher's going to be in very close proximity with each child. So, does, would that then necessitate the entire class to be quarantined if the teacher is exposed, or it has a positive case?
Well, I think then that goes back to, you know, looking at the different grade levels and the type of interaction. A teacher walking around and maybe spending a few minutes at a desk versus, you know, someone having to be that close for longer than 15 minutes is where that difference is. So, if they're wearing masks and they're generally social distanced, but maybe she's walking around to, you know, help, that wouldn't necessarily, you know, be considered a close contact.
But if they're, let's say element, I'm thinking more elementary right now than, obviously, high school's going to be different.
Right, right.
But usually, I would think the reading group lasts at least 15 minutes, right?
Right, yeah.
Before they rotate to the next one?
Yep.
And so, as the day goes on, you've just exposed every child in that class, right?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, potentially. I mean, if everybody's wearing their, you know, the purpose of the mitigation strategies is to limit that, but that doesn't mean that they wouldn't ask the kids to quarantine that were maybe part of that reading group or whatever, just, you know, as an additional safety measure to make sure that they can monitor them for symptoms.
Mr. Evans?
Lindsay, thanks for being here and presenting again.
You're welcome.
I just needed to get some rumors out of the way that you could probably give me the real scoop on.
Okay.
So, I read that Maricopa County Health Department pushed off the responsibility for contact tracing to nursing staffs on school district campuses. Is that true?
So, I guess I don't see it completely true. Obviously, they don't have access to the information that we have, so it would be really hard for the county to say, who did that kid come in contact with? What classes was that kid in? Did he go to the library? They're not going to have that same type of information, so when it comes to contact tracing on this side of things, really, that's the way it's always been with any communicable disease. We are the ones who provide them with that line list of people because we have the information. They don't have that information, but truly, any other contact tracing outside of, you know, our district would still be them.
Okay, so, yeah, because you have a master's in nursing science or science of nursing, right? So, but are they providing resources and training to get you just, or is that something that you all already do, so that you're prepared to at least offer that information?
I think from a nursing standpoint, you know, it's something that we, you know, learn through our training, not on this magnitude ever, obviously, because, you know, we're in a pandemic, but obviously, with communicable disease before, you know, this is no different, it's just on a larger scale.
Okay, and then, people at this district hate when I ask this question, and I'm kind of smirking, because we normally do reporting like this, or in case your staff would do reporting like this on paper, and then what, fax it to the, to Maricopa Health Department?
Yes.
Is, you know, it's like, okay, we're, really?
Well, so, they also have a phone line that we can call, they have a line item list, so if we had, you know, a lot of cases, you know, they try to make, give us many avenues to report that. I think, you know, most times, it's a telephone call.
Okay.
Because, you know, you're working through all the logistics of that case and...
I'll let it go. All right, then, the other, we talked about this at our last meeting, too, so the timeline between when a child presents to us not being able to mandate that they get a test, and not being able to get the results of the test back from the parent, which means that if they actually go through the process of going through a test, whether they quarantine or not, that information gets from wherever that testing happens to Maricopa Public Health, and then back to us, so by the time we actually know, we're talking, how many, two weeks? They, she, I think Marcy Flanagan said two weeks minimum.
Right, so, you know, as far, I know that the testing turnaround time is quicker now, and we're getting actually phone calls about cases a lot quicker than we have been, but what I will say in regards to that, if you, if we have a sick student and they're sent home sick, we still follow the quarantine guidelines regardless of a positive test or not. So, they're not going to come back on our campus until they, you know, have completed their 10 days, or they provide us with a negative test. So, at the end of the day, you know, from the standpoint of them going home sick, even if that turnaround time for getting a positive test back takes longer, we still have taken steps to make sure they're not on campus exposing people with their symptoms.
Unless they're asymptomatic.
Unless they're asymptomatic.
And they're spreading, yeah.
And generally, you know, we wouldn't know that there's a test anyway, so.
Unless there was contact tracing from people who were sick from being spread to an asymptomatic person.
Right, but, you know, with the way testing works right now, I mean, the information we have is only as good as we get, so we either have to wait for the county, or hopefully, parents will give us that information, so we can keep everybody safe.
Yeah, and I guess the point I'm getting to is, a family member can test and present positive, a child, their child or their nephew or whomever may be back and forth.
Yeah.
And, you know, that creates potential, I'm just saying potential spread, to other people who are family members, not necessarily the child who's in the same classroom with another child, and so, you know, it's just...
And we hope that families follow the direction from the county and state and keep their children home, even if they're not symptomatic, if they have a family member or household member who's tested positive.
But the problem is, the county doesn't provide us that information.
Right.
If it's not our...
So, again, it goes back to whether they notify us, yes.
Okay, thank you again.
Yes.
And I think that Mrs. Brunner had one more question.
Okay.
So, there's information being stated that because teachers are now declared essential workers, that they do not need to be quarantined, and I was wondering if you could speak to that?
Are you speaking of somebody who's positive for, I guess, quarantined in the sense if they were exposed?
Well, can you say both scenarios? So, let's say we know they're positive, and let's say we know they've been exposed, but we don't know if they're positive.
Yeah, so if they're positive, and anybody that's positive needs to stay at home and isolate for their 10 days from when either their symptoms started, or if they were asymptomatic from when they got their swab done for their test. For anyone who has been exposed, maybe to somebody who was positive, the essential employees as part of the, as part of the governor's declaration basically states that, you know, they can still come to work, social distance, wear a mask, do all those things, as long as they're asymptomatic and continue to monitor their symptoms.
And they don't need to get a test, even though they were exposed?
They would still follow those guidelines to get a test for, through the county. And I think, you know, sometimes people talk about exposure in the sense of, you know, maybe I thought I was exposed versus being actually stated you've been exposed, like, whether it's a contact tracer or somebody telling you, I tested positive and I've been around you. There is still, you know, a lot of confusion out there in regards to what exposure means.
If there's no more questions from the board, I could, thank you, Lindsay.
Okay.
We appreciate your help with all the questions and the answers, so, and now we'll hear from
Madam President, members of the board, tonight I'm going to review the school reopening feedback from our Chandler teachers. Before we go into the results of the survey, I want to give details about the survey window. All teachers were sent to the survey the morning of Wednesday, August 26th, and the survey was open until Friday, August 28th in the afternoon. We had a high respondents rate of 96% of our teachers participating in this survey. Another detail is that the Maricopa County School Reopening Dashboard was updated on Thursday, August 27th, in the middle of our survey window. In analyzing the data, we were able to see that 2,081 teachers completed the survey prior to the updated dashboard with improving results. Now, let's take a look at the four questions. The first question states, are you aware of the personal protective equipment, PPE, and safety protocols in place? And then we listed what the PPE and safety protocols included: face coverings, social distancing when possible, frequent hand washing and sanitizing, and disinfecting services. Overwhelmingly, 95% of our teachers said that they were aware. The next question states, are you ready to return to full-time in-person instruction, five days a week, entire class roster with safety protocols, when the governing board approves? 59% of our teachers said yes, 41% of our teachers said no. The next question, are you ready to return to a hybrid in-person model if the governing board approves? 57% of our teachers said yes, 43% of our teachers said no. And the last question, do you feel the governing board should consider looking at opening in-person instruction before October 13th? 21% of our teachers said yes, full-time with safety protocols, 12% of our teachers said yes, in a hybrid setting with safety protocols, and 67% of our teachers said no, remain virtual until October 13th. In addition to our four-question survey, teachers were able to provide comments. We had roughly 1,300 comments that were received, and here are the themes in those comments: one being the appreciation for the opportunity to provide feedback, concerns on the hybrid model and what instructional planning would be required, consistency with the October 13th date, safety, and missing in-person experience with their students. Do I have any questions about the survey?
Ms. Love?
I do. So, why take the survey prior to the dashboard changes? Was that, like, intentional, or, like, I'm just curious, like, what, like, if the results would have been different after the dashboard changes?
That's hard to predict because we didn't give the survey after, right? And most of our respondents responded prior to the dashboard being updated. We administered the survey, so we'd have the results in time for this session, and that you'd be able to hear back from teachers.
Okay. I think that was my only question, just why, prior to the dashboard changes? And then, can you just review that breakdown again of, you know, kind of like the differences between primary and secondary teachers on that, so I can make sure I have that right?
For each one?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to go back just to make it easier.
Uh-huh.
Actually, sorry. Actually, start first one. Okay. So in breaking this down, elementary teachers responded with a 96% rate that they were aware of PPE. Secondary was at 94%. The next question about full-time in-person instruction, elementary responded 63% of their teachers saying yes. In secondary, it was 56% of their teachers saying yes. In looking at the hybrid in-person model, elementary was at 57% yes and secondary was at 58% yes. And then in the last question about considering, do you feel the governing board should consider looking at opening in-person instruction before October 13th? I actually have a breakdown for each response. So yes, full-time with safety protocols, elementary was at 25%, secondary was at 18%. Yes, in the hybrid setting with safety protocols, elementary was at 14%, secondary was at 9%. And then to no, remain virtual until October 13th, elementary was at 61%, secondary was at 72%.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions? Mr. Evans?
I'm sorry, because we did this a little bit earlier. Did you talk about that, the summarized comments? Did you already talk about that?
I did.
You did?
Yeah.
It's like deja vu. Yeah, I knew I heard it.
I know.
Can you talk about the last two again, even though I know you just did, but?
The safety and missing kids.
Because I guess I wasn't paying attention.
Yeah, that's completely fine. So in terms of the themes that we saw within those comments, safety was one of them. There was earlier conversation of what did that mean? Safety in the metrics, safety in their personal situations in terms of elderly parents having a baby, that type of thing. And then the theme in all of that was that teachers miss their kids and they miss that, that in-person experience with their kids and wishing they had that back, you know, and in terms of like, they feel for the situation. That was.
I have one more. Can you just go back to number, very first question, the 95%?
Sure.
Obviously, everybody understands what needs to be done.
Oh, I'm sorry. The end of my mic on. Everyone needs, understands what needs to happen to keep people as safe as possible if they're together. So one of the principals brought up a really important point to me, and what she said is, you don't trust us. You don't trust us to take this seriously and take the safety of our staff and every single one of our kids seriously. But she's like, and I was on the campus at the time. One of the first things she did was go get this rope out that had all these knots in it. She said, we go through scenarios every single day, because one of the things I get accused of is wanting to put off the decision to health professionals because why should we be making a decision like this for our students and families? And, but what this principal was doing was pointing out, this is what she's done as a professional every day for, how many, you know, 15 years. And now that things are changed, she has to adapt to those things for, specifically for the safety of her staff and every single child and parent who wanders onto that campus, right? So she gets this rope out with the knots, and the knots are six feet apart, right? But, but after that, there's a second check, so that kids put one arm out and one arm out this way, and it's not going to be six feet, but it gives them a guideline because by the time their fingers touch, it's going to be six feet, right? So that's where those ropes match up. And there, there are marks on, all over the campus on the ground. Don't tell Mr. Fletcher, but there's stuff all over the ground so kids know where they're supposed to be, where they're supposed to stand. There are going to be, as Mr. Narducci will talk about, expectations that will be unfortunately drilled into the kids' heads over and over and over again, but it's for their safety. And she said, you have to, you have to stop and realize that we're here, we understand what this situation is. None of us wants, it's like, it's like when you're a backseat driver. The person driving the car doesn't want to get in an accident either. They don't want anything to happen to them. We don't want anything to happen to ourselves and our families, so we definitely don't want anything to happen to the kids on the campus. And then she threw the quote out, that Dr. Castile says to new, new employees every year, she's like, don't treat, she says, we do this. We don't treat these students like we treat our own kids. We treat them like we want them to be treated by others. So we want them to be treated well, and that's, you have to trust us that that's what we're going to do. So that's, that's very obvious because there's a 96% return rate on this, on this survey. Is that what you said?
It was 96%. Yeah.
Which is unheard of, right? So people are telling us, if, based on whatever decision you make, we're always going to do what needs to happen so everybody on campus is safe, to the best of our ability, right? But it's not to the best of our ability. We're going to do it. So that's, she's like, you have to trust us on that, regardless of when you come back. You have to trust us on that and let us do our job. That was really powerful.
Yeah. Mr. Evans, stories like that make me just proud to our kind Chandler because we're all taking this seriously and we're all trying to keep families safe.
Are there any other questions from the board? Okay. Thank you, Amber. We appreciate all of your research and putting together all the data for us and actually being able to disaggregate some of the other information from it. So thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay. If I can get back to our agenda, now we will be moving to our action items. And I'm not sure who's going to go first, but we will be discussing, or, I'm sorry, Mr. Frank Narducci and Dr. Gilbert. Looks like Dr. Gilbert's going to start, so they will be talking about in-person instruction plans. Dr. Gilbert?
Madam President, members of the board, thank you for this opportunity today to share the information with you for you to discuss and approve transition models to look at in-person, return to in-person learning. Sorry. Sorry, trying to make sure we both have some room up here. With that being said, as you said, as you stated, myself and Mr. Narducci will tag team as we move forward to give you information. In this presentation, our focus today is to look at our previous communication to the governing board in our community as to how we've transitioned in our transition timeline of the things that have occurred so far, as well as provide an overview of student enrollment, looking at our enrollment by the numbers, review, as well as review the reopening mitigation benchmarks and look at how we are being measured and that as well, and that information, as well as propose options and expectations for reopening.
Madam President, members of the board, I'd like to give a brief summary of the transition since May of 2020. On May 6, 2020, we reviewed the four quadrants of COVID-19 Prepared Status Document. I know I'm bringing you back a little bit here, so I just want to remind us that at that time, we looked at four quadrants. Quadrant one, the task force that worked since March into June and July, came up with quadrant one, which we would return fully. And if you remember, that was July 22nd, 2020. And so there was a plan as to what the safety measures would be if we returned fully on July 22nd, 2020. Quadrant two of the plan was to return with modified hybrid model, and we had several hybrid models that we looked at, researched, and, and came to conclusion with the models that we're presenting tonight. And quadrant three was to remain in virtual learning with additional Chandler Online Elementary Connect option for K6, which we, we presented the AOI and had that approved for the younger grades. Thus, Elementary Connect was provided as an option, and that's the option we had to be in based on the executive order. And quadrant four of the plan, of the 68-page plan, also talks about modified closures if they were to occur, whether that be a closure of a part of a campus, the closure of a full campus, or of course, if the governor or the State Department had, had the closure of schools again. On June 10th, 2020, we had a presentation of the COVID-19 Task Force reopening plan. On June 24th of 2020, there was a resolution for CUSD's plan to reopen, and there was a calendar change made for the reopening. On August 5th, 2020, an executive session was held on the safety of the reopening and resolutions on the district COVID-19 operations. On August 26th, just recently, we had a study session with Maricopa County Health Department where Marcy Flanagan provided us the benchmarks and gave us additional information, you know, based on state, county, and district level data. I'd like to review the elementary by numbers because I think it's important that we have a landscape of what's with us now versus what we ended last year with, or, so that we have a clear picture as to who we're talking about and the impacts that we're having for children. So right now, in our K6 virtual in-person enrollment, these are students that, whose parents chose for them to be in the virtual enrollment, and they are in with their teachers from the school sites, and they're assigned to their school sites. We have 14,400 students. This is a group of students that any transition prior to the quarter would be, would be impacted. Also, we have the Chandler Online Elementary Connect enrollment. We have 5,463 students who are participating in that program. With that new online program, parents have the choice, and they still do, have the choice to come back at quarter one, quarter two, at the end of quarter three, or they may remain in the online program for the course of the year. Right now, our enrollment for K6 students is 19,863 students. Our enrollment last year at the end of the year was 21,779. I did not include preschool members in that count. We do have lower numbers, and that's important for you to note because some of the things that we're going to be talking about have an impact based on those lower numbers that we have at this time. At the elementary schools, we do have students at our sites based upon the governor's executive order. And so since we started August 5th, we've had students in our drop-in technology use at K6, about 950. Our elementary students in person, that are in-person childcare in our Kids Express and Little Explorers Program at peak was 452. We have 200 students that are participating in instruction in our Special Education Service classrooms. About 200 of those students receive services. And preschool students in person are also attending programs right now at 132. So just under 2,000 students have been in our schools since the executive order was put into action. With this information in front of you, I wanted to basically walk you through our grade levels and what our class configurations look like, because I think it's really important with decisions that you'll be making this evening. What I'd like you to see is the greens are different colors based on the ability to hit some of the mitigation strategies. In this case, social distancing is a big one for us. We know that Marcy Flanagan talked about social distancing, talked about mask wearing or face covering, and cohorting as one of the top three, as, as some of the top three mitigation strategies. So I'd like you to see that we have 923 student classrooms, I'm sorry, in our K6 environment. And I would like to follow across each grade level. Of the 104 kindergarten classrooms we have, 85 of those, 84 of those classrooms, or 81% would have 18 or less students in those classrooms right now in the virtual or in a in-person setting. 17% are 19 to 22% or 18 classrooms would have 19 to 22 in their classrooms, and two have over 23 students. So we have a 98% ability to moderately to maximum, to maximum, social distance our students at kindergarten. In first grade, with 110 classrooms in first grade, we have a 76% of our classrooms are 18 or less. And when I mean 18 or less, I don't want to focus on the 18 because a lot of them are 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, but 18 is the guideline that I used in below. 23 more of those classrooms have 19 to 22 students, or 21%. And three of our classrooms at first grade have 23 students or higher in those, or 3%. So 97% of our chances there to be able to assist with mitigation at the first grade. Second grade, out of 112 sections, we have 65% at 73 of our classrooms at 18 or less. 30 of our classrooms have 19 to 22 at 27%. And we have a 92% option there for our lower class sizes. We would have nine classrooms there with 23 or more. Now, I say 23 is a lot. I'm talking about to be able to, to be able to social distance to the maximum number that we want to. If we go three to six feet, we get 100%, but if we're talking closer to six feet, that's what these numbers represent. Fourth grade, a third grade you'll see is a little lighter green. We get to about 90% there as 56% of our third grade classrooms have 18 students or less than them. And if you get to the 19 to 22, 49 classrooms are added to that, or 42% for a 90%. I think you see the trend there. Fifth grade is identical to fourth grade with about 64% of 18 or less. There are 23 or higher in there are 11 classrooms. So with fifth grade, we would have to do some accommodations there if, if our students came back for the social distancing pieces. Sixth grade follows that 50%, being 62 classrooms, 50 classrooms at 19 to 22 at 40%, and again, and 90% of our classrooms are at 22 or less, so about 12 classrooms. So you can see in the red to pink, we would have a few of our classrooms that we would do some accommodation for as, as we were looking at whole groups of students. An important number I'd like you to see is at the very bottom, the 117 sections of our K6 self-contained. With that 117 number, those are students that are in classrooms of 6 to 11 students. And so they, they can at 100% meet that mitigation strategy. And so one of the things, we really have these numbers in the virtual based on two reasons. The numbers are the way they are. They're looking better than a lot of our cohort numbers in other districts, simply because we have our children that have chosen the COA model. And then we also have some students that, that are not with us, that were with us last year or had not started with us. They might be at other, other locations, but according to other districts, our numbers look really good for mitigation strategies.
So briefly, I would like to now take you through the secondary by the numbers. We look at our virtual to in-person enrollment. These are our students that are at our, connected to our, their home school, that they're doing virtual to in-person with the plan on when we go to in-person, they would be moving. You see that the enrollment for seventh and eighth grade is 6,279, and enrollment for 912 is 14,282. When we look at our students that are enrolled in our online, our Chandler Online Academy, you'll see seventh grade, there's a little over 1,300 students, and in the ninth through 12th grade, it's a little over 2,600 students. For a total population of 24,526 within our secondary, you can see that the bulk of the students in the secondary are enrolled at, at their sites still and had, did not move to the online, and they're looking to be virtual to in-person. The other thing I think is real important when you look at the secondary numbers is that we, that the secondary has increased this year by over 500 students. So we did not see a decrease. We saw a small decrease in the junior high, but overall, the secondary has grown by over 500 students. Now I'd like to get into our reopening mitigation benchmarks and share some information with you as we look at how mitigation would happen in, in the sense of what, what are the, the type of strategies that could occur? So when we look at our safety benchmark protocols, this information was taken from the safety return to in-person instruction from the Arizona Department of Education, and it was from a presentation that was given on August 6th of this year. So when we look at community spread levels in school, I think it's important to see the school reopening plans, and it says it should encompass these scenarios. A traditional model, a hybrid model, a virtual model, or an intermittent model, meaning that if you were open and you had to close, what would that look like if it was a school or if it was, it was the entire district of having to close? When I see this, I go back to what Mr. Narducci shared as to the information that we brought to the board. to the board, as to what our plan was, that the task force worked on early on, and we had our four quadrants. And if you see that the scenarios that we've had is in line with this reopening, this reopening plan. Also, I think it's important, when you look at the table that's down below, you're looking at community spread levels, learning delivery models, and as well as recommendations of mitigation. So, when you look on the left of the column, where it says community spread, you have green, which is no to minimal community spread, yellow, minimal to moderate, and then substantial, when they're looking at community spread. Delivery of the model, traditional, as I stated up above, the hybrid model, which is really being a conversation within the community at this time, and then virtual with supports onsite. So, when we look at those, this chart, you look at, the table combines the levels of community spread, but then the mitigation strategies. And that's what Mr. Narducci was talking about earlier, as to the mitigation strategies. So, let's just take the minimal to moderate, which is the hybrid model, and you can see where hand hygiene and respiratory etiquette, sneezing into your, right, into your elbow in the pit, so that you're keeping control of not going and sneezing on someone else, or making sure you're washing hands, or if you blow your nose, throwing the tissue away and then washing your hands, or using hand sanitizer. Enhanced cleaning, proper ventilation, Mr. Lock mentioned that earlier, monitoring absenteeism, when we're looking at how many kids are not in school. Symptoms screening, physical distance, it says mask or face coverings, cohorting, field trips. So, it kind of gives you an idea of, this isn't an exhaustive list, and it's not even saying that you have to use all of them, but it's saying, when you put your plan together, as to how you would reopen, these are some things that you can do when you're mitigating.
When Marcy Flanagan was here from the Maricopa County Health Department, she had talked to us a little bit about our benchmark protocols and areas of mitigation. And she had talked about social distancing, up to six feet where feasible, as being one of the top ones. She also said face covering, where all staff and all students would be another mitigating factor. She then said that cohorting, and it was a specific question that I did ask, because keeping same groups together was also an important feature as well. And then, hygiene and sanitization was another area. And so, I kind of lumped those together, because there has to be protocols that are stringently stressed and met, with washing hands, using hand sanitizer when washing is not available frequently throughout the day, and you're going to hear those in our plans. Covering the coughing and sneezing, as Dr. Gilbert was giving as an example, washing hands and sanitizing hands immediately after those occurrences, and routinely disinfecting all high touchers. As elementary principals will tell you, I just love analogies at times. And for me to really understand this, I kind of made the analogy to four tires on your car, okay? And if you can imagine that each one of these mitigation strategies is one of the tires on your car, any of those tires that become deflated, or become flat, or have a lot less air in them, is not a good thing for your travel. It's not a good, it's not to get to your destination or journey. So, look at the mitigation strategies as keeping them balanced, keeping social distancing balanced, just along with face mask and cohorting, as well as the hygiene and sanitization. As with our car tires, we know that when you balance them, it works well. But I would fear to say that if we had a plan that sacrificed one to where it was a flat tire, for example, cohorting, it's allowing those opportunities not to be mitigated in that one area. And that if we had everyone balanced to a high degree, it's probably better and safer to go through that journey than it would be to, say, ignore one, ignore two, just as we wouldn't ride in a car with one flat tire or two, to get to our destination. Underneath all of that, and this road and this analogy here, is stay home if you feel ill, or exhibit any COVID-19 symptoms. That is something that we need to partner with our staff and our families with, that that is an underlying, an underlying theme, that everybody's responsibility is to check first before you come to school.
Thank you, Mr. Narducci. I think it's important, before we get into our district dashboard and look at where we stand within our community, I think it's important to really understand how we're measured. One thing that's important is, our administrators across the state asked for measures. How can we determine when it's safe to go back to school? What does that look like? And we got, and we received measures. And I think it's important to talk about how we are measured within our district, on what does reopening look like. But what I'd like to do is, is kind of give you some information that will help, once we look at the dashboard, to really understand what the dashboard is telling us as we look at the different measures. So, first off, when we look at these benchmarks, and we look at the learning scenarios, and we talk about community spread benchmarks, as usually what happens is, you'll see something on a document, and then you'll look at another document, and you wonder, is it talking about the same thing? What I think is real important on this slide, when we look at the community spread, see this as the overall risk in your, risk level in your community. So, when we're looking at the dashboard, this is the overall risk level in your community. And how is that determined? Well, the Arizona Department of Health Services define that in order to determine how we're going to measure where we are, whether we're in green, or yellow, or red. So, what that, when we look at that, it has to do with cases, the case rate, and to be in a minimal, which is green, you have to have less than 10 cases per 100,000 people. The percent positivity needs to be under 5%. The COVID-like illness needs to be under 5% based on this. And this comes from the Maricopa County reopening dashboard and guidelines, that was pulled off of their site on September 1st. If you look at the moderate, being in the yellow, the case rate, it needs to be between 10 and 100 cases per 100,000, right? So, below 100. 5 to 10% of percent positivity in the community. COVID-like illness needs to be between 5 and 10%. That is the range that they have given. Then you have your substantial, and that is case rates 100, above, greater than 100 of 100,000 people, greater than 10% of percent positivity, and then the COVID-like illness also greater than 10%. Real important, when you look at these, at these models, and determining what is the risk in the community, understand that you can't be, you cannot be in the yellow if you have any red, and you cannot be in the green if you have any yellow. So, it's an easy way to look at it. You have to have them all, you can't have one to get to the next, all right? And then, that'll be important, as we look at where we are as we move forward. I also added this slide, because this is more of informational slide, to kind of help you when you're looking at the information. What I think is real important is to know that, when you look at the case rate or the number of cases, the Arizona Department of Health Services offered two metrics to determine this measure. And that was, one, to either look at a decrease in the cases over a two-week period, or to look at the rate below 100 cases per 100,000 over two weeks. The Maricopa County Department of Health recommended using the case rate. So, when we're looking at the measures of how a district is, where they're moving in their color, understand we're using the case rate. So, that's where it becomes real important to know, when we look back at this chart, you will see under moderate, under the percent positivity, or looking at the case rate, I should say, it's 10 to 100, all right? So, it's, those are some of the things that we're looking at. So, one thing real important, also, is then when you look at percent positivity, and I hate to read, but I think it's important, because this really helps to understand when you get into what the learning model looks like. So, you, again, you have your community risk, whether you're in green, yellow, or red, but then your learning model is determined also by your, one, your community risk, and then the other measures that I'm going to, I'm going to talk a little bit more about. And says, on the dashboard reflects a percent positivity range of 5 to 10% as correlated to the moderate community spread. So, it's saying, the moderate community spread, which is yellow, is between the range of 5 and 10%. That's how you get into that 5 or 10% or the yellow. And that aligns with the Arizona Department of Health Services. But here's the key, to move from a virtual to hybrid learning scenario, the Arizona Department of Health and the Maricopa County Department of Public Health recommend schools wait until there is less than 7% positivity for two consecutive weeks. That becomes real important, if you see that a community might have a moderate level of risk, but they're still at a virtual level in the scenarios of learning. Becomes real important, when you're looking at the numbers. So, I share that, so that you also have this, that you can see for yourself, besides me explaining it, that you can look at both of those charts. So, with that said, we talked about the risk, right, and the risk level in the community, but now you also have your learning scenarios, as I was mentioning to you. And I think, as you look at the, look at this, you have to see the one before the other, but understanding that they work together. And that's one thing that I think is hard, when the community is looking at these numbers, because they have to understand that one begets the other, but then there's a correlation once that happens, right? So, with that being said, you'll see that the, the learning scenario for one, in green, is traditional, and yellow is the hybrid, and virtual means that you're in the red. So, when you look at the, at the green, it says, all three benchmarks in green category for two consecutive weeks. That's how you get to green. There's no yellow in there. It's all green, which goes back to, you can't have, you can't have yellow if you have red, you can't have green if you have yellow. If you're looking at the hybrid, you can have all three benchmarks in the yellow or green categories for two consecutive weeks. It goes where you're still in the yellow, you can have some green in there, but you can't have any red. And if you have any red, you're in the red. So, when you look at the learning models, that determines what is the learning scenario that you have within your community. And then, I want to bring your attention again, when we look at these learning scenarios, in order to begin offering hybrid learning, the Arizona Department of Health Services and the Maricopa County Department of Health recommend benchmarks fall within the moderate, which is yellow, community spread category, in all three benchmarks, and, and the "and" is important, and a percent positivity, less than 7% for two consecutive weeks. I share that, because then I'd like to go to the next slide, that gives you a little background. And you can see, in the hybrid model, there's a little asterisk next to the 2. Why is that important? Because on this slide, it really gives you a little more help in understanding these slides. It's always nice if you can get a little help, when you're trying to understand what a slide is telling you. So, with the asterisk, it tells you, there are two learning scenarios that can be recommended when there is a moderate community spread. So, it's not saying, once you're in, when you're in red. It's saying, once you hit yellow, there are two scenarios that you can have, as to the learning model you, that is available to you, that is recommended for you. One is virtual learning with onsite support, when an area has a weekly test positive, percent positivity of 7 to 10%. So, you're still in the yellow, but because you're between 7 and 10%, your learning model is still virtual. Or, number two, hybrid, once the community has met the recommended threshold for a percent positivity of less than 7% for two weeks. So, I wanted to share that information with you, and give you some context of when we're looking at how we understand the benchmark, and this one is our district. So, when we're looking at our district, you can see the overall risk level, which is your top left, again, that goes to, what's the overall risk level within your community, is yellow, it's moderate. Because it's yellow, it automatically says, now you have two options of learning styles. And because of the benchmarks to our right, we currently, as a district, are in hybrid with onsite supports. Now, how do we read this data? Well, one, I think it's important to look at, you'll see that it's a, it's a two-week piece that we're looking at, and you keep hearing, two consecutive weeks, two consecutive weeks. And so, you'll see that you have your most recent week, and this was talked about last week, with Ms. Flanagan, who was there sharing information with you, and you also have your prior week. And so, every Thursday is when data comes out and gives you these different weeks. And so, your most recent data was what just came out on August 27th, I have it down at the bottom of the slide, at 4:00 PM. When we, when we get our next batch of data, this most recent week will fall to be your prior week, and the new data will be the most recent week. So, how do we look at this? Well, first off, when we look at our data as a district, you can see that the trend is a promising trend, right? Because if you look at, in the prior week, the case per 100,000 people went from 63, 3.19 to 41.03. Our percent positivity went from 6.38 to 3.61. And then, our COVID-like symptoms remained the same. What's important about understanding when, where the data is coming from, your case per 100, 100,000 people, and your percent positivity is two weeks behind. And your, your COVID-like illness for that information, that information is one week behind. And it shows that information to you, when you go to the website, to say, when are these, when is this information pulled, in order to see this? So, when you look at it from a district perspective, you will see that, from the case per 100, 100,000 people, we are in the yellow at 41. And the reason we're in the yellow, because we're not below 10 per 100,000 in the community. You'll see that, for our percent positive, we are 3.6, and that is green, because we're below 5% of positivity. And you will see, COVID-like illness is green, and that is because we are below 5%. So, that's where you, it helps you to understand why we were, where we are. Now, how is it that we have our moderate risk in the community, and we are now allowed to do hybrid learning as the learning scenario? The reason that occurs is, if you look at your prior week and see the percent positivity, it's 6.38%, under 7. Then, if you look at most recent week data, it's 3.61%. It's below 7. So, it gives you two weeks of being below 7% of positivity in the community at the risk, which then allows you to have hybrid learning. So, I share that with you, so you can kind of see how those two come together, of what is your, your overall risk level in your community, and then, how is it that you're able to get to the scenario of what the learning style is, or the learnings, I'm sorry, the learning scenario? So, I bring that up to show where we are as a district, but I think it's important, because our district is, covers 80 square miles. We're a large district. We have over 40, 45, 46,000 students. So, it's important that, when you're looking at data, which we always do within our district, we're big on data. If you go to our website and look at our Journey 2025, there's quite a bit of data that we look at, and we break it down, not just only as the district, but parts and portions of our district, to make sure that we're looking at everything. So, the data in this doesn't only show from the, from the dashboard, what does it look like from the city and the community, what does it look like from the district, but it also goes into the ZIP code. I think it's important that we touch on these, I'm going to cover two ZIP codes, because currently, within the district, we have two ZIP codes that fall into the red, which is substantial. So, I'd like to start with our ZIP code 85224. I think it's real important to understand that, we have to look at all of our communities. We know that if we have any, any portion of our community in red, we need to take that under consideration, determine, is there something different we need to do? It's just an important piece to look at. But I will say, when we look at this data, like we did for the district data for 85224, you will see that there's a promising trend that occurred when we pulled this data, and the data was updated on August 27th. You'll see from the prior week, that this ZIP code went from a case per 100,000 of 104, and has decreased to 39.03, which moved it to yellow. You will see that the percent positivity went from 10.91, and it moved down to 4.11, and is now green, because it is under 5%. And you'll see the COVID-like illness remained the same. I think that we also need to know, is that the next data point comes out tomorrow. Based on what I shared with you already, you can see that, one, it's in red, because there's red. there's red. You can't have red and move to yellow. But I also want to point out what this slide is, your prior week is about to fall off tomorrow, and your current week, your most recent week, is going to become your prior week tomorrow. And if the trend that we see on this slide in the most recent week holds true, you're going to have yellow and green, which means the risk level in that community in the ZIP code is going to be yellow. The other thing that I think it's important to look at is you already are at, based on what the data tomorrow will show, I would say that if the trend stays the same, even if the numbers stay the same, you're going to have green and yellow, but you're also going to have two weeks under 7% of positivity, which is going to move this ZIP code if the data holds tomorrow. They will be moderate as it looks at community risk, and it will be a yellow for hybrid as it looks like for looking at the recommendation of a learning scenario. Again, that's if the data holds with what they've had in the last, and that comes out tomorrow. So it's going to be important that we look at that information. Now, I'd like to move to our next ZIP code, which is 85225. Again, if you look, very promising in the trend that you see in this data. So the prior week went from cases per 100,000 people from 80.30 to 55.69. Your percent positivity went from 11.18 to 7.61, and your COVID-like illness stayed at 3. And you'll see that in this most recent week, you have yellows and greens. If this trend continues tomorrow, which is when the next data point comes out, if there's yellows and greens or all yellows, you're going to see this ZIP code move from being red substantial to yellow in the overall risk level. But here's a key point, and it goes back to the percent below 7%. You can see already that the prior week was 11.18, and the current most recent week is 7.61. Neither are below 7%. But here's what's important. If this trend continues, and that's what's going to be important when we look at the data, correct? Tomorrow, if we see that the 7.61% of percent positivity goes down below 7 tomorrow, that will be the first week of two consecutive weeks. So it is possible, and again, it can go either way. It is possible that if the trend continues that we are seeing in our community, that the community percent positivity is decreasing, as well as the cases per 100,000 people go down, tomorrow's numbers could show that it would be below 7. That still would not take this ZIP code into a hybrid scenario. It still would not. But next week, Thursday, would be the next data point. And if tomorrow's data and next Thursday's data shows these percent positivity under 7, this ZIP code will also be in the hybrid model of learning, as well as a moderate level within the community of risk. So this is information that we're going to have to look at, and we're going to have to continue to follow to see where we are. What I would say that is real important, though, is that it's on a positive trend. Now, here's a key piece that I think is important, and Mrs. Flanagan shared this last week. I know there's conversations of why the district is where it is, and is it a ZIP code? Is it this, or is it that? I think it's real important to understand, the simple piece is this. If you have red, you can't be in yellow. If you have yellow, you can't be in green. And one of the things that she shared last week is, when you look at the case per 100,000 people, you have to be under 10. She said in order for that to happen, and I apologize if I quote her wrong, I hope she'll send me an email, and I apologize, it's going to take a vaccine to get there. So this is a heavy lift already when they did the metrics. So remember when I brought back early on and said there was two options of what you can do for case rate? One is just to take if you have two weeks that declined. Well, if that's the case, you can be in a really bad place and decline two weeks and say, oh, that's green, I don't think so, right? So they didn't do that. So they went with the case rate under 10. So currently within our district, in all of our ZIP codes, we are at, in one ZIP code, probably, I think it's at like 19. And everything else ranges from 19 to 55 to 60 within the case rate per 100,000. So unless everybody is getting down into below 10, we're going to be yellow in that area because we're not going to be below 10. So I think we have to be careful when we look at data and determine what's the responsibility or the reason. When we look at the 7.6% positivity, I can tell you, there's a number of ZIP codes that fall into a higher number that's still yellow, that's affecting the district as a whole. So we can't look at, we have to understand that there's different components. But I really wanted to make sure that you understood, from the perspective of cases per 100,000 people, to get below 10 is a very high standard. I'm not saying it shouldn't be there, but I think we need to understand that it's there, and how you're going to have to get there when you're making decisions on determining on whether we reopen and what does that look like. So with that said, I hope that, sorry, I want to make sure I didn't miss anything, because there's a lot of information to unpack with those four slides to really understand the measures. With that, I will turn it back over to Mr. Narducci for options.
Thank you, Dr. Gilbert. We're going to go into the next section of our presentation, which is going over options. We have four options that we're going to present tonight for the governing board. Option A and B, which are two hybrid options. Option C, which is return fully in person. And option D, which is an elementary option only for returning fully with a staggered CUSD Hybrid Optional Learning Group Assignments. In a hybrid, just important to note that what we're discussing in a hybrid right now is to come up with a scenario where we are dividing equal groups of students in half to get the social distancing, to get all the other mitigation strategies able to be able to do that, okay? We're going to go over two samples with that, but I want you to understand that if we move to this type of a model in the hybrid, we'd be looking at trying to divide up the school as equally as possible into a 50/50 number. Families that have different last names living in the same household will be adjusted, and group adjustments may need to be made after that 50/50 split is done to accommodate the special needs of our English language learners and to balance out learning size groups, as well as to accommodate special access to our students who need access to special needs, specialized teaching, and specialized instruction. The first option we're going to review is the elementary hybrid option. This is option A. It's a six-day A/B rotation model, and as you can see from the chart, it's a continuous A/B/AB sequence until we return fully to in-person instruction. With a hybrid option, they're never made to be long-term options, they're transitional options. And so you get five days of in-person instruction over two weeks. And as you can see, on Monday, for example, in this chart, learning group A would be with their teacher in person at school, while learning group B would be at home or wherever with distance learning. Tuesday, the groups would flip. Wednesday, they would flip back, and so on and so on. The six-day model is because then you start the next week with a group B and a group A. So pretty much, you just keep flipping that model, and we get the five days of in-person instruction over two weeks. A teacher would prepare and instruct the same lessons for group A and for group B. So on Monday and Tuesday, would have the same lesson plan unless there were modifications for students that needed those modifications in the classrooms. Teachers are not teaching both in-person and virtually at the same time, as it's not feasible to be able to do that in this model. Targeted interventions would be increased with additional in-person day. So by having a six-day continuous rotation, we have more contact time with teachers in a two-week rotation than the other model we're going to be talking about. So it does provide for that extra time that our limited staffing that work with specialized groups can contact and be in contact with them. It also maximizes days students are participating with in-person instruction. And in this model, a hybrid model, we get maximize social distancing at the elementary because we're taking already small groups and making them smaller, right? So we'd be taking a group of 18, making it nine, or close to nine as possible. So we maximize our social distancing, we maximize our face covering because that's a requirement that we have, and we would be minimizing the cohorting. So bringing those tires back, we're operating on some full tires, but our cohorting goes down a bit. And the only reason I want you to understand that is because our students are away from school in this model, and we don't know what cohorting groups they're with, but they're not with a five-day same cohort group, which is our maximum, which would be a maximum part of cohorting to reach that mitigation standard. So the elementary hybrid option with the A/B model is, again, one that just keeps switching on that A/B rotation model, and it repeats it after six days.
So when we look at this from a secondary perspective, I thought it was important to make sure that when you look at this model, you can see that on Monday, your learning group A is in person, and it's looking at periods one through six. So they're seeing all of their teachers on that day. When you're looking at the hybrid, one of the things, right, as Mr. Narducci shared, that you're trying to reduce the number of students together at one time within the classroom, as well as on the campus. So your Monday would be your A group seeing all of their classes, one through six period, while your B group is at home. On Tuesday, it would be your B group seeing all of their classes, and the A group would be at home, and then it switches back and forth each day. So in the secondary option A, as Mr. Narducci mentioned, it's a continuous A/B/AB as you're going each day, back and forth. Teachers prepares and instructs same lesson to group A and group B, because they would be right back-to-back in the sense of preparing for lessons. Maximizing days students are participating in in-person instruction. Students would see their teachers in person three times in week one and two times in week two, but that would flip depending on whether you're in the A or B model. Teachers will have a prep period each day. Targeted interventions increased with additional in-person day. Teachers, and I think this is real important, and this has been in every plan that we've written since the beginning, and that is, teachers are not teaching both in-person and virtual at the same time because it's not feasible. To have a teacher be in the classroom, teaching in-person students during the day, and at the same time trying to teach a virtual lesson at the same time is just not feasible. Important to note, though, teacher face-to-face instructional contact days are reduced from the current model, as they're seeing students in the virtual. Students are working independently on the distance learning days, and that's the days when they're at home, so that would be their B day. And at the junior high for electives, because our electives normally have an alternating elective compared to their core, students will only see their elective teachers one or two times per week.
The second option in the hybrid arena is a hybrid option B, which is five days, an A/B with a virtual rotation in it. And if I review this with the chart, it allows for repetitive and consistent in-person and distant learning weekly schedule. What I mean by that is that families in this model of a hybrid have consistency. Every Monday and Thursday, my child's going to be at school, or every Tuesday and Friday, my child's going to be at school. And I know that three days a week, my child's going to be at home in this model. So on Monday, learning group A would be in person, they'd be at school with their teacher. Learning group B would be at home during that time. On Tuesday, it's flip-flopped. Learning group B would be in, learning group would be out, learning group A would be out. On Wednesday is a virtual learning day for all students, so all students would be connected via virtual learning. And then on Thursday, group A would come in, and then group B would be home, and you can see the pattern. Again, an advantage of this over the other is that it is consistent for families to see that they have specific days that they may need to accommodate for their child. It's four days of in-person instruction per two weeks, and that's to be two weeks, and I'd like the audience to know that, because the other model gives us one more day of in-person instruction, and that's where I said the A/B rotational model gave us the additional day in a two-week period, right? So teachers are not teaching, as Dr. Gilbert said, in-person and virtually at the same time, and maximize social distancing and maximize face covering and minimize cohorting is also in this group, because three days a week, we can't mark off that cohorting box. But we do get maximize social distancing, because again, in this hybrid model, we're just bringing smaller class sizes into smaller class sizes. Virtual learning day, which is that Wednesday, and the teacher's going to instruct all students in the virtual setting using a combination of both synchronous and asynchronous learning, okay? So to remind, for the parents out there, the synchronous learning, again, is instruction that will include your teacher providing small group instruction, interventions for ELA, which is our English Language Arts and Math, as well as our core subjects of science and social sciences, which are integrated science and social extensions. Our asynchronous instruction will include, and that's the time that the kids are working independently at home, the day they're off-track or off-rotation days, they will be involved in assessments, teacher assignments, enrichment activities, and intervention activities. And I'll go in another slide to kind of define that a little bit more.
So from the secondary perspective, again, looking at periods one through six on the day that you have in person. And so group A would have periods one through six, where group B would be home. On Tuesday, B would have one through six, and A would be at home, and again, having a virtual day in the middle of the week. As Mr. Narducci said, it would be the consistency of a student being at school on Monday, Thursday, or Tuesday, Friday. When you look at the virtual rotation, virtual learning day, a teacher instructs all students in the virtual setting, again, using a combination of, which is real important, small group instruction, reteach concepts, interventions. From the asynchronous perspective, it's assessments, assignments, enrichment, and interventions as they move forward. I think it's important, as Mr. Narducci said, it allows for that consistency. Students will have in-person instruction two times per week, but their live instruction three times per week, including the virtual day, depending on how that asynchronous looks. Teacher will have a prep period four days per week. Teacher will prepare and instruct the same lesson, again, as we did in the first option and option A. Teachers are not expected and are not going to teach in-person and virtually. Students will be working independently on the distance learning day, which would be their B or their A day where they're off and they're at home. Number of teacher face-to-face live instruction, again, in this model, would be reduced based on the current model. And again, the junior high electives would see their teachers either one or two times per week.
Under this hybrid option B, and as well as option A, elementary distance learning activities, these are the home days that our students would be home. This is a chart to show you what a parent can expect of the type of work that will be assigned and the amount of time. Now, remember, all of our children are different. All of them learn at different rates, all of them produce at different rates, and all of them work at different rates. And so please don't take these hours, but this is something that they can kind of see as what my child will be involved in when they're not at school, okay? So of course, on the right, left-hand side, you're going to see preschool K1, second and third, and some recommended timeframes that our children would be involved with home activity on the day they're not in school. So as you can see with preschool, it would be up to 1.5 hours. This would be self-paced learning activities that are asynchronous. Asynchronous is a lot of work that can be done independently. Work completion from in-person days, so a teacher may assign completed work that has not, I'm sorry, work that has not been completed on the day or the rotation the day the student was in school. And then enrichment and intervention opportunities would occur as well. The K1 recommendation is up to three hours, and second and third up to 3.5 hours, and fourth and sixth up to four hours. Because we do have instructional minutes that we do have to meet, and this will help us be able to meet those on the days the students aren't in school on the hybrid model. aren't in school on the hybrid model.
From the secondary perspective for the distance learning day, we'll see self-paced learning activities such as in elementary, work completion from the in-person days, enrichment and intervention opportunities, reading articles, annotations, and reflections as it would pertain to, for example, English, independent project work, formative assessments and benchmarks, objective or open-ended item practices. We're really fortunate with the strong instructional team that we have through curriculum instruction that will be working with our teachers in this area as to what that would look like.
Oops. Yeah, back on slide. Okay, in summary, school distance learning days for the hybrid model, and again, the distance learning days are the days they're not in school. These are the days that they're out off-track in the hybrid model. Students will participate in distance learning two or three days per week. Students will engage in learning tasks given to them by their teachers in a variety of ways. These assignments will be posted to Google Classroom. Assignments will be given to students when they are onsite with their teachers, either on their A or B rotations. Students will be able to complete their distance learning tasks and assignments generated in their in-person classes at their own pace on these days. As we talked with principals earlier, these would be assignments that students can do. They wouldn't be first-time teaching assignments for our students because we don't want to frustrate them at home by not knowing how to do the work that's assigned to them on their off-track day. Teachers are not teaching both in-person and virtually in summary as it's not feasible. And then the mitigation strategies in a hybrid model are very good in the social distancing and the face masking and all of the other sanitization pieces that we have in play, but the mitigation through cohort is minimized. What to expect in the elementary hybrid, and this is a summary of what the elementary hybrid would look like. Depending on option A or B, it would be two to three days of in-person instruction and two to three days of independent distance learning. Fifty percent of our students assigned to classes each day will be made to allow for maximize social distancing. Reduced cohorting mitigation as students are not with their cohort daily. Desks and tables will face one direction where possible. Hand washing, sanitizing multiple times per day, and as you know, with elementary, ninety-six percent of our people said they understand the safety procedures. Our students would be on and off the bus sanitizing hands anytime they leave the classroom or enter the classroom, restroom breaks, breakfast, before and after breakfast, lunch, and recess. Formative and benchmarks assessments would be able to be provided. Specials would be provided. We'll have to do a different special rotation, but our music and our PE band and orchestra would also be able to be provided. Social emotional learning lessons and accommodations and special education support services would be provided. If it was decided hybrid, we have had discussions about possibly including the whole class in the social emotional lessons so that the kids could see each other and participate in that before the teacher went out on their instructional day. Students report to the classroom upon arrival to campus as well. And what to expect, also continued here, controlled student movement throughout the campus, as we said, one of the mitigating factors would be large areas not being utilized by all students. Limit sharing of supplies. Shared resources are disinfected after their use. We'd also schedule visitors only, and no classroom visits or volunteers. Transportation will run their regular routes each day. Parent pickup and drop-off will have the drivers stay in their cars. Limited number of students utilizing playground at one time. They would be social distanced where feasible. Our principals have already put plans into play for that as well. All staff and students are required to wear face coverings. Grab-and-go lunches will be available, and students will be social distanced in the cafe. We've set up multiple cafes to look at our fifty tables that we have in there, and whether we put two or three at a table, we can either stagger our lunches out a little bit more to accommodate that social distancing in that location as well. And of course, breakfasts will be provided, a little easier to social distance there because our students that purchase breakfast are a smaller number. And lunches will be staggered to provide time between to get the tables disinfected as well as the seats.
From the secondary perspective, similar to what Mr. Narducci shared, two days in-person and two days independent. It could be two or three depending on the A-B rotation, with one day online doing the virtual instruction, which would be in the option B. On-site learning supports remain available for internet access. Again, the goal is to reduce the number of students assigned to a class each day to allow for social distancing where possible. We know that in the secondary, we have larger schools, but going to the hybrid where you're splitting the population in half, that is on the campus at any given time, as well as to try and reduce the number of students in a class so that you can try and mitigate how many students are in a secondary classroom. Each school will assign Group A or Group B using the alpha sort by first letter of the last name, so it was established equal sizes of groups for the school. Social emotional learning lessons, accommodations, and special education support service provided. Desks and tables facing one direction where possible. Schedule visitors only, no classroom visitors or volunteers. Although social distancing will be difficult, efforts to accommodate will be made where feasible. All students and staff will be required to wear face coverings. Hand washing, sanitizing multiple times each day, whether it's on the bus, classroom, restrooms, breakfast. Students report to classrooms upon arrival to campus or social distance in available open spaces because there's still breakfast. We have parent drop-off. We have students driving, making sure that we have a flow of what that looks like. Parent drop-off and pickup areas, the drivers stay within their cars when they're picking up and dropping off. Controlled student movement throughout the campus by assigning directional flow in the hallways, at lunch, and in your high-traffic areas as you're trying to address how the flow will be on a campus. Limit sharing of supplies. Transportation will run regular routes each day. There was a conversation as to what the transportation would look like on buses. Lunch stagger to provide time to disinfect. Currently, in many of our schools, we have at minimum three lunches now. Grab-and-go lunches will be available. The cafeteria will remain open all day, and multiple spaces will be utilized for lunch to maintain social distancing as much as possible. Students may remain in the cafeteria, hallways, and open spaces, or may return to the classroom at the principal's approval. Currently, we have a lot of outside spaces, and I know the temperature is warm now, and as we get into our climate where, believe it or not, it almost didn't seem like we're going to cool down at any time. That will help also in spaces outside with our schools that have open areas and grass. And again, hand washing and sanitizing before and after meals.
The hybrid will also require continuation of the channel unified school district drop-in learning assistance, as the board knows. This is the opportunity where the executive order from the governor asked us to keep our schools open. Schools that were open five days a week in the prior year needed to provide access to students in the days that they were not at school for any type of drop-in learning assistance, especially with the technology with virtual learning. So drop-in learning opportunities will be made available in the hybrid model at our elementary, junior high, and high schools by sign-up, and that's how they're done right now and have been since August 5th, and will maintain limited capacity. To maintain social distancing on our buses for students who are scheduled for in-person instruction, parents will continue to need to provide the transportation to the drop-in learning assistance sessions because we are going to be running routes to pick up students in the hybrid model. The same routes that we would normally run on a given school day, we're just running them with smaller groups each day. Option C, as we discussed a little earlier, that was one of our options, was for both high school and for, I'm sorry, secondary and elementary, was to return fully in person. I'm going to present to you a couple of scenarios here that make this an option for elementary school. So as you can see, it's returned fully with safety protocols in place. So I always want to state that the mitigation piece is very serious, and we need to have those in place at elementary. We have three hundred and fifty classrooms of preschool, kindergarten, first, and second grades that have lower enrollments. And I showed you in that slide earlier that we have our best chances of social distancing within those classrooms and hitting all of the standards. So we have moderate to maximum social distancing. Many of our classrooms, it's maximized. We do have some that are moderate, so that's why I have the moderate to maximum. We also have maximum face covering. We have maximum cohorts. Why? Because the same kids are coming back to the same classrooms five days a week with the same teacher, unless there's a substitute teacher, right? But cohorting stays pretty consistent. One hundred and seventeen of our classrooms, as I said prior in that one slide, are K6 specialized self-contained classrooms. These classrooms have between six and eleven students in them. We can maximize their social distancing. We can maximize their cohorting, and we can maximize their face coverings or accommodations for their face coverings based on any of their IEP pieces. Five hundred and ninety of our classrooms of third, fourth, fifth, and sixth grades can also maintain moderate to maximum social distancing, maximum face coverings, and maximum cohorting. We have the ability to accommodate large elective classes through in-person virtual instruction at site, which would mean that, say, a music teacher that may have more students may virtually teach from her classroom to the classrooms where the kids are already social distanced in their classrooms. When I say fully, that means we're pulling any other items out of a classroom other than the student desks. We're not going to have reading centers like, you know, we have awesome classrooms, and our teachers work so hard at getting them prepared, but they understand, and they return knowing that if we had to social distance, we would be moving our desks as far apart as possible, utilizing wall space to wall space and backspace to front space, and leaving a space for teachers to be able to move around, right? So that means that reading tables, horseshoe tables, things of that nature would not be used in this full return until we move further down the line. It also means that our reading groups, as Mr. Brunner was talking about, we will not be creating small reading groups unless we can social distance them. We'll be working with groups of students and groups of the classroom, but we'll be keeping students at their own desks. So how we assign students to desks and into locations of classrooms will have to be very poignant based on what their grouping need may be so the teacher can move to them independently and also purposefully. So even with the five ninety classrooms, we have principals right now that are working with alternative schedules where they have different rotations, where they can move students to keep the social distancing small to PE, to music, to band and orchestra. So we would continue to work with them if there was a decision to be made to be able to make that work so that we can maximize our opportunity to hit the mitigation strategies as well as possible. I do have to say, as well in this model, with our numbers being mostly in the green, as I showed, and ninety percent or more of our students being, I mean, of our classrooms being able to meet the social distancing pieces, that this is doable with the number of students that we have right now in the virtual setting, the students that are in the virtual in-person setting at this time. Elementary return fully with safety protocols. Some of the advantages, all students, or some of the, not advantages, but some of the areas that kind of discuss this a little bit more, are all students return to the in-person instruction with safety protocols in place. Students would receive direct instruction five days a week, access to all services, personnel, and technology. Required benchmark assessments and progress monitoring may occur. We have gotten a little bit of a waiver from the state to be able to benchmark students when they come back, when they return. But October 1st, no matter what, all of our literacy plans on all of our students has to be into the state. So it's just one more part of this plan that would allow us to get that done for our students. Teachers can address gaps in learning. All students and staff will be required to wear face coverings. Controlled student movement throughout the campus by assigning directional flow in halls, at lunch, and in high-traffic areas, and I know many of our board members have actually gone out and looked at our schools and visited with principals, and I can tell you that, I so appreciate that because I think you saw firsthand at the elementary schools how serious they're taking the safety measures that we're putting in place, and I do want to say thank you for that. Hand washing, desks and tables would also face one direction where possible. Hand washing, sanitizing multiple times a day, as I said in the hybrid model. These are things that are going to happen no matter what. Limit sharing of supplies. Shared resources will be disinfected after use, and I guess you're hearing this again, but it is a redundancy that we have to keep telling ourselves that this is important. Students report to the classroom upon arrival to campus, and that would mean whenever they get to us, if they get to us by bus, what if they get to us by car, or if they walk to school, they will be going right to campus, and principals are working on exit plans as well as entrance plans to mitigate large groups of students coming in at the same doors. And so they have that in place that they're working on as well, whether it be hybrid or whether it be return in full, any of the options, that will be a standard practice. The parent drop-off and pickup area, drivers will stay in their cars at all times, and again, we'll still have the grab-and-go lunches will be available to students, and students will be social distanced in the cafe. They will also be social distanced when they go out to recess and in certain areas of the playground and supervised and monitored by staff. Before and after-school childcare will be offered at satellite schools. So our after-school childcare, Kids Express, has been very much valued by our community. And so at this point, we would be hosting satellite sites anywhere from twelve to sixteen, and everybody will be connected to one of those satellite sites, and we would bus students to and from those satellite sites if you're not a satellite site. The satellite sites will probably be predetermined based on the fact they already have a high enrollment from that site that has requested after-school or before-school care. I know Lanaberry and Steve Hewitt are working on a plan now, but we would look at some satelliting and busing so that everybody has access to before- and after-school childcare.
So when we look at the secondary return, so option C, which would be the secondary return fully with safety protocols, I think it's important to note that early on, when it was looking that we were going to be returning to school, each site in the secondary was looking at a block or a form of block to come back to, to be established on their campus to reduce the amount of flow that is happening with students on campus as well as how their classes are set up. With that being said, all students return to in-person instruction with safety protocols in place. I apologize for the redundancy between elementary and secondary, but it is real important that we have very similar things that are in, but there are some differences that occur at the secondary that do at the elementary. So I think it's important with coming back to fully because it would reduce the technology divide of devices and connectivity because we know that although there was a really heavy lift of getting devices out to families, we still have families without devices. We still have families without connectivity. This would allow to address some of the divide that we have as it relates to technology. Focus on instruction to address achievement gaps, and that was talked about some earlier, to address achievement gaps as well as grades for post-secondary college and career aspirations of students. I think it's real important that we can't leave out that this is a time that some of the stress our students have is because their grades in the secondary go on a transcript, and that transcript is going to wherever they're planning on going for post-secondary. So I think it's important that we have that as an understanding of where students are right now at this place. Although social distancing will be difficult, efforts to accommodate will be made where feasible. All students and staff will be required to wear face coverings. Controlled student movement throughout the campus, again, will be so important in hallways, at lunch, in high-traffic areas. Desk and tables facing the same direction where possible. Hand washing and sanitizing multiple times a day. Again, grab-and-go lunch so that it's packaged and it's not just open. They have opportunity in open spaces as well as the cafeteria, hallways, back in the classroom to be able to eat. Again, students report to class in the morning when they arrive. If they're dropped off by their parents, they report to the class, or they're getting breakfast, or they're in open spaces to be able to be social distanced, which would be managed and watched by the administrative team and the staff at the school. Parent drop-off and pickup areas, drivers would stay within their cars at all time.
With that, I'll turn it back over to Mr. Narducci.
Elementary has one more option, and it's to return fully with a staggered start, and I'll explain that, that model and that option for you. So I'm going to start with saying that I've divided groups, I've divided students into groups, and based on our class sizes and our ability to cohort students. Group A or group one are preschool to second grade students. You'll see there that there's a start date of September 14th, 2020 in this model. 350 of our, our classrooms of preschool, kindergarten, first and second grades, those were the darker green across the board that had 97, 96, 98% ability to, to meet some of the mitigation strategies are lower enrolled, and they're, they're lower enrolled and, and have the ability to, to maximize our mitigation strategies. Group two, they're self-contained students. As I talked about in the data, there's 117 classrooms of elementary specialized self-contained students that have enrollments between six and 11 students per class. So based on those lower numbers, that's another cohort group two that, that one of this model states is if our goal is to come back at a fold at some time, that they could possibly do that safe based on the benchmark pieces moving forward. Why? Because for these groups, virtual learning is not best practice for teaching and learning for primary grades, and specialized self-contained classrooms need constant supervision during instruction. There's constant modifications, constant pieces that could be met in this model better in in person than in a, a virtual mode. Also, achievement gaps start at these grade levels, and, you know, we've been trying to close achievement gaps for, I know Mr. Evans talks about this a lot, we've been trying to close them for the last 50 years. And they, the, the more I read and the more research I know is it's simple, close the gap where it starts, and these are the grade levels where it starts, and you have a better opportunity. So in, in this model here, we would have an opportunity to, to get on top of some of the achievement gaps because students have been out for quite a bit of time. If we don't, it's going to make it more difficult and require extensive interventions in the future. That's just a fact. Students in groups maintain maximized social distancing, maximized face coverings, maximized cohorting five days a week, as well as other safety measures established by Maricopa County Health, the CDC, Arizona Department of Health Safety. So that cohort there would, would have our best chances of being able to come back full and to be able to monitor in excess. Maximize use of staff and space because for this group, we would, we would be able to discontinue the site drop-in technology access model. They wouldn't need that piece. And if any of you have had a bunch of kindergartners around you and having to keep them on a computer a little bit, you'll know what I mean, that for this group, that's a benefit that they, that they wouldn't have those students having to come in by themselves and just keep them on the computer. Option D also includes a third group, which is our third through sixth graders. The recommendation in this model is to stagger their return a week later, and they would start September 21st, 2020. It'd be 50, 590 classrooms of third, fourth, fifth, and sixth grades. In this group, we still get moderate to maximize social distancing, maximize face covering, maximize cohorting, ability to accommodate larger class sizes. We have 20 classes, 20 classes out of the 960 some odd classrooms with 23 to 27 students, and we'd have the ability to be able to accommodate them into smaller groupings. Ability to accommodate the larger elective classes through in-person virtual instruction on site and other models as well. We would include sites in that decision. And all three groups in this model would continue in person October 13th, and parents that do not want in-person instruction have the opportunity to remain or move to Chandler Online Academy at the start of the second quarter. What this model does and why this model is a little different than the full return is that our, in this model, the, our kindergarten and preschool students have never been in school. So this allows that first week and that first, that first, their first experience to be really focused on, especially since they've been through something that isn't really normal, a pandemic and closure of schools. So it allow, it would allow staff to be able to work with them a little bit more conscientious with a little bit more care, and then to bring the older kids, which many of them have been on those campuses before, they know the layout of the land, to be able to work with them when they come in then on their social, on their, on their mitigation strategies and how important they are. I'm a strong believer that our children need to be taught what to do, but they also need to be reminded, and you need to remind often, and after a while, it becomes rote. And so with them, this, the staggered start would allow for that care and consideration to be done in this model. Excuse me. So we come down to recommendations. For elementary schools, the recommendation to the board, and it's always, you're, there's so much that comes at you, and I totally understand that. But when we make a recommendation, we have to look at the whole landscape and the whole picture. Sometimes we do what's popular, sometimes we don't. Sometimes we just go back to say, hey, what's the best thing to do and what's the best thing to do for children is learning? So I'm going to preface the recommendation based on this, based on what's good for student learning and what's good for student, for student teaching. Also, improvements in benchmarks. The benchmarks keep improving the way they are, and the goal is to return our students to school safety. That is the goal. And so my recommendations are twofold. We have the ability with 923 sections of elementary to be able to have lower class sizes and to be able to hit the mitigation strategies. We have the ability to mitigate all areas recommended by the Maricopa County Health Department and the CDC. We have an option. We have a hybrid in our district of parents who can select COA, Chandler Online Academy, and for those who have left our district, an option as well. Based in, on the progressions of the safety benchmarks and based on the fact that virtual learning is not best practice for teaching and learning for elementary students and that our achievement gaps are forming in the initial stages of schooling with our preschoolers in our K through second grade, and based on the fact that also our social emotional impacts of our learner as they view themselves and how they view learning long-term are something that we need to look at, which virtual environments really don't allow you to get that deep into. The recommendation would be that our two, two recommendations for elementary, option C to return fully in person October 13th, and option D for elementary to have a staggered start, starting September 14th, and staggering the third through the sixth grade September 21st. Those would be the two options that I would recommend for elementary schools, preschool through sixth grade and our specialized populations.
As Mr. Narducci shared, when you look at the options also for the secondary, these options don't, these decisions don't come lightly. I think it's important to understand that when we're looking at what our options are and the thought process as to, as things that I've shared in regards to the, the digital divide that we have with students and families, we're getting concerns from our, our staff as to coming back. You looked at the survey and what that shared. We have to take all of this information, and I agree with Mr. Narducci, every, every time it has to be what is the best as the overall. I will tell you that had the benchmarks not been changing the, the way they have, and as deep as I've been watching these benchmarks, some of the, the recommendation I have for you would not be a recommendation. But I have to look at all this perspective of what the information that is out there and the data that we have at our disposal as to what we should be doing. I think it, we have to look at the social emotional piece that has been coming from emails, and I know you're, you're receiving more emails than I am, but I'm still receiving the emails as to how students are doing and the struggles that they're having. I think it's important to, to understand that there's a lot of aspects on both sides. So no matter what the decision is, you're going to have somebody that's not happy one way or the other. I understand that. But my job is to look at the whole perspective of what we should be doing as a district for our students and staff, and, and it's important for our students and staff, and how do we keep them safe? When we look at the benchmarks, and the benchmarks has moved to be in a hybrid model. If our benchmarks had not moved to be in a hybrid model, I would not be recommending any type of hybrid. So when you look at the twofold similar to, to elementary of what the, what my recommendation would be for our secondary students, that is one, to go to the, the AB virtual day model, the hybrid model, starting on the 14th, and then going to option C and going full, back to full in-person on October 13th, which would also include those students that would be coming back from the Chandler Online Academy. I think the reason I think that is so important is to, when you look at coming back in full at the quarter, there's going to be a heavy lift, no matter whether you came back in, in virtual, or if you came back in full, if you came back in hybrid, because there are students and teachers that are going to have to move at the quarter. In the secondary, and I know there's a lift at the, at the elementary, but at the secondary, we have to look at, one, what is the model that parents need to know that they're coming back to when they make a choice? We need to ask the parents that who said they were coming back at the quarter, are they still coming back at the quarter so that we can prepare for them? We have to take that information, and we have to share it with our schools, our, our junior high schools, our high schools, so that they know what students are coming back and what classes they're supposed to be in. Then they almost have to do a turnaround and do a master schedule to make sure all kids have schedules so that they can get those schedules out to families to be prepared on the first day of, of October second break, of, of the second quarter. And so there's a lot that has to be done that is going to occur, and that becomes their first day, unless we look at a hybrid, which a hybrid model is not something you live in. It's something is a transition. What could happen at the secondary with having a, a hybrid transition starting on the 14th is now you have, your, your, your site is split between the number of students there. You're trying to mitigate the number of students in a class. You're working to acclimate students to be back on campuses. Seventh graders have never been on their campus. Ninth graders have never been on their campus. So there's some newness that has to occur in a transition. I know that unfortunately, and, and I believe it or not, I do listen to concerns of, of our teachers. And with that being said, we have to look at transition into what's going to happen because there's going to be disruption. There's going to be disruption whether it's at the 13th that someone, that students come back, it's going to be a disruption if you do a hybrid prior to that. But what can happen in the second quarter is you start with everybody understanding the protocols of what's on campus, how the movement should happen on campus, understanding who their teachers are, building that, that understanding of their campus so that when you come in on the 13th of October, now you're moving right into what school is going to look like. So again, the, the decision is not something that's taken lightly, and again, if the benchmarks hadn't changed to where they are, I don't know that I would be, I would be recommending a hybrid, but I think we are at a hybrid level, and I think we need to be prepared for some of the transition that's going to need to take place for our students. With that said, that's why we made, we, I made the, that we made the recommendation in regards to option, option C for returning all in-person on the 13th, and option B for the hybrid of returning on the 14th to have hybrid transition into returning on the 13th. With that, I'm sure there's questions.
Thank you, Mr. Narducci and Dr. Gilbert for a very thorough presentation on this. Dr. Castile, did you have any?
The board wanted to talk about the recommendations.
Or if you had any comments or any additions to this. I know they did a great job.
I think if you want a formal recommendation to put it all together, or you want to work off what they did?
I think we work off of what they did. So I think we'll go ahead and ask some questions first because I think there are a few questions that we, we probably have for you. And then after we get some of our basic questions answered, we can then perhaps go into discussion amongst ourselves and get a, get a actual motion out here. But are there any, I guess what I'm asking is are there any clarifying questions that we need to ask Dr. Gilbert or Mr. Narducci about, about their options before, so that we have a, a clear understanding of what everything is? Mrs. McGee?
I have two questions. First one for Mr. Narducci. If we take your recommendation with option D, then as of the 13th of October, we would move the elementary to option C. Is that correct?
Correct. In the recommendation, option D would start September 14th with two groups coming first. The rest of the virtual group will be September 21st. That would give them two weeks of in-school instruction prior to the break, and then everybody could return fully in-person October 13th. That would be when we did survey some of our Chandler Online students, that's when they would be able to join the full in-person recommendation of, of option C.
Okay, thank you. And then the other question is, I'm assuming when we, if we vote and move on October 13th to in-person fully, that's assuming that the benchmarks are good, we're showing positive improvement, and if not, whatever the other plan would be would.
Correct. These, the recommendations, which they are the benchmarks or recommendations at this, however, with those recommendations, that would assume that our, our progressions are, as I said in the piece, are, are being met and they keep progressing.
Thank you.
Ms. Love?
Have these models been presented to teachers? And if they have, what's been the feedback that you've gotten?
From the secondary perspective, when we were looking at the hybrid models, one of the things that we did was we sent that information out to our principals so that they can work with their lead groups. Some it was their whole staff, some it was, it was maybe their department chairs, and then they spread and asked questions to others on their campus, which is why I looked at the model of the AB going virtual because that was the overwhelming, what they, they thought if there was a hybrid to look at, that would be that one.
In addition, the task force that had those models on them were comprised of teachers that were on that task force, and each of the task force members went out to other groups like groups to sample some of that. So for example, we did have some other hybrid models that didn't make it on AMPM because it just, it just, it just didn't work with the bigger systems of a district as well as an AABB model. That was also decided that there weren't enough touches. You might see a student on one day, but there'd be five days before you saw a student, that same student, and that was just too much for a teacher not to have a, an eye or an ear on a, on a student's for that time. So yes.
To add to that, I'm sorry for secondary, there was a block model that was looked at, and it was similar to what Mr. Narducci said, the timeframe between when a teacher would see, see a student was just too long.
So when it was presented to like teachers or there was a, the cohort or guess the, the committee, did they know that these were the dates that you had in mind with, you know, for elementary, the staggered start from September 14th and the 12th with a full in-person on October 13th, and then I would say also too for the secondary, that started September 14th with going back full in-person for option C at October 13th? And did they know about the, the option C? Sorry.
Well, the, the option of returning in full, I guess what I would say is the option of returning in full has always been there. That has been the conversation, that at some point, students are going to come back. But to your first question in regards to the dates, no, there was no dates put onto this because, one, we couldn't put dates on it because the board is going to decide when that is going to be. When we looked at what are the possibilities, we had to be proactive to look at options. So we were talking, had been talking about this prior to. The goal that I had in the secondary is we need to start having conversations of whatever it's going to be. We had already talked about if we came back in full, but then with the hybrid of knowing that the measure was going to a hybrid and not going to automatic, then we had to start talking about what does the hybrid look like? So that didn't have any date. So that didn't have any dates onto it, it had more of the conception of what does this model look like and how would that be?
Well, I mean, I, I think I agree that we've always talked about, like, how we can get everybody in, you know, fully in-person, but we never said that, you know, October 13th, you know, that's our, that's what we're shooting for, right? We said it would be based, in our initial meeting, we said it would be based off of whatever the metrics we're reading in the September, was it 26th meeting, whatever that date was? And so, you know, if I were, did I get that bit right? 23rd, one of, the last meeting in September, essentially. So if I were a teacher and I was looking at these dates, knowing that, you know, this had never been an option in terms of like, oh, we're, you know, start staggering them in for option D, of course, and then we're going fully in-person on October 13th, that can be kind of alarming.
These, these dates, Ms. Love, these dates also were readiness dates when we'd be able to and prepared, to be able to systematically be able to move students if the board decided that this was an option that they wanted. So we did pick dates also that could make that option viable and to stagger kids, and so the September 14th was after conferences, it would be hard to do anything prior to that, because it'd be kind of silly to tell parents, we're returning in a staggered start, but we have two days off for conferences or two half-days. And so that, for us, this 14th was a timeframe that we could make the transition and, and get that date. Anything after that would be probably a little senseless, and anything before that would be a little difficult to do, because there's a lot of communication that would have to happen afterwards. I would imagine if we went to staff, we would get a lot of dates, some that, as, as we discussed prior, that feel ready to come back, some that feel, as 63% said, they'll, they'll return when the board approves in the K6, and others that, in the survey data that they talked about, in elementary anyway, there was a little fear of being in virtual and their, and their information back, and then going to a hybrid, and then coming back to full. So there was this little bit of information that came out of people's responses that don't, don't make me go to another model before we come back in full. And so that was something, too, that we looked at with the recommendations that were made. But these dates are where it would be plausible and possible for us to be able to do it in a large system.
Last question, we've had a lot of questions from parents about, you know, this is after Labor Day, and a lot of parents were saying, let's return after Labor Day, but there was concern from some parents in terms of, you know, we see spikes after these large holidays. How would that, like, if there was a spike after Labor Day, how would that impact these dates?
Well, I think one of the things we'd have to look at is, what is that spike and where is it? One of the things that Ms. Flanagan said last week was, and I think it's real important, has to do with, we're going to see some ebb and flows of what's happening in our community, and that's going to happen, and, and unfortunately, we can't control what everybody's going to do, you know, within the community and what does that look like, but we do have to make sure that we're vigilant on data. With that being said, one of the things that she talked about is that if data changes, don't have a knee-jerk reaction, because there's going to be an ebb and flow, you need to wait at least two weeks to see, does that happen? What does that change look like? Does it go back down, or does it continue to go up? And I think that's what we'd have to look at to determine what would happen after that. Even if we went back, we'd have to look at that ebb and flow, what is, what's going to happen there.
So then would we wait two weeks after Labor Day? Let's say we have a spike, would we wait two weeks and push this all back two weeks?
Well, I think that would be something that we'd have to have a conversation as an administration and also with the board. I, I share the two weeks, just because as of last week, when it was explained by the executive director, coming from the Maricopa County Department of Health, she shared that as of, be careful of, I use the word knee-jerk reaction, but in the sense of looking at, what is that data telling you, and there's going to be some ebb and flows?
So with Ms. Flanagan's discussion there about an occurrence, or a spike, as you say, Ms. Love, you would look at that for two weeks, not making a change from what you decide to not, but then in two weeks, we may have to reevaluate, is that spike getting worse? Are those numbers regressing in that area or in the district? Or is it just a spike based on the fact that, like you said, more people around each other, there's a holiday, that people are out of town or whatever? So it would be a two-week watch before we come back, and as Dr. Castile would probably gather the board, if there was something that was that long in duration, that would need for us to look at it to change course of what we start. But the worst thing we could do is keep doing this for the whole system, as well as our, for our community.
Thank you. Mr. Evans?
Yeah, and I think that trust thing comes back again, too. I mean, nobody, none, none of us here, no parents want anybody to suffer from, from this, and so we need to trust, and you need to know we trust you, that administrators are the right thing's going to be done. Mr. Narducci, I have a question, but I, I just want to just go through a couple quick logistics questions, so I don't, I don't want a long answer, I just, if you just tell me, that doesn't work. So where I went to school, we just didn't have space for students. So they went to a hybrid model, I would say your option B, B as in boy, but rather than go to school three days a week, you went to school in the morning, or you went to school in the afternoon. What doesn't work about that model? Because I will say that, like, out of 1,200 kids in, in high school...
I'll be real short, I can be real short on that, because we discussed that at great length with principals, as well as with our task force. The AMPM model doesn't allow for our students that have childcare needs to be consistent with what they need. You have two starts for the day for the school, but we also have half of the learning being done, and then the students are gone. The cohorting is quite difficult there as well. And then our transportation routes are really hard to run when you're running a K-12 system. If you're a K6 system, or a, a K, even with Kyrene being a K-8 system, the massive amounts of bus routing that we do in this district, I don't, I don't even envy, so that, that would be the two areas, is that it would be hard to get our transportation moving for students with an AMPM rotation, and having groups where they have to be picked up or dropped off at, at days where it's, is really difficult for, the, the feedback we got would be really difficult for parents as well.
Okay, thank you. And then the second one has to do with in a, you know, I'm going to go back to option B as in boy again, siblings, what happens with your big brother and sister? Actually, that, that would count in option D as in dog as well. What happens to your brother and sister who are also at the same school with you? Because now they need daycare.
With an option B or option D, Mr. Evans?
Either one.
Okay. So in option B with the hybrid, we would work with cohorting a group together that would have the family within that group, even if it's a different surname under the same household. I'd like to say we'd be able to go even further and try to get the same groups at high school and junior high into the same groupings, and that would be something we would look at in a hybrid model, but it'd be a little more difficult to do based on when kids have to hit certain classes in their A or B rotation, that would have to be at the high school level. A little easier for us to do it at the elementary, to be honest. What we would look at doing in the hybrid model B option is looking at students who are in different choice options within elementary schools. We might have a student at, say Hartford, but their brother or sister go to Knox, or they go to Weinberg Gifted, or one of our other schools on choice. We would look at making sure those kids are in the same groupings, and that would just take a little more work for us to be able to work with what we're connected. So the wonderful part about infinite campuses, we can connect our families and be able to see where they are to make sure we make those adjustments to the groupings. In option D, Mr. Evans, the staggered start, we're, we're talking about a week difference in between the two. So we wouldn't put another burden on our teachers to do hybrid or anything like that in that week, we would continue them in, in virtual if that was the decision, or if you modified it. I mean, that's one of the things that you could look at as well as a board, but we'd be looking at a week of learning that would, would have to, and then, of course, the kids would join each other for the last two weeks prior to the inter-session break.
Okay. Thank you.
Mrs. Brunner, did you have any, like, I guess, questions concerning the, the various options or clarifying questions?
I can ask it after the motion, if not.
Okay, okay. So I guess I would like to have a board member propose a motion. Mrs. McGee?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I would like to have a board member propose a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve option D for the elementary, moving to option C on October 13th, if the benchmarks remain positive, and I would move that we start with hybrid B for the secondary, and then again, move to option C on the 13th if the benchmarks remain positive.
Is there a second? I will second the motion. Shall we have some discussion? Mrs. Brunner, let's start with you.
Sure. I had some clarifying questions first. So just to clarify, there would be no parent volunteers on campus?
Correct. To start with, we would actually move that with no volunteers at that capacity. We're limiting the amount of exposures from outside of the school.
And then you said there would be no reading groups, no grouping of any kind of the students into little horseshoe tables or anything like that? Would students have access to manipulatives for math, or materials for science, or basic, will they be handed papers, or are things still going to be digital? What is, what does the classroom look like?
They, they will still use manipulatives in the classroom, whatever's needed for learning, but those will have to be disinfected, is the only thing. Any shared resource will be disinfected, but we are going to be asking parents, for example, if crayons. In the old way we used to do things, crayons would be a communal thing, we know, we put them all in there, everybody used them. We will try to make sure that those are individualized by students for those types of things where we don't have to share. But anything that is a shared resource, like manipulatives, would be utilized in the classroom and then just have to be wiped down, or sprayed and set aside. That's one of our options as well, is the spray that we have, we can let it sit on that and then sit overnight.
And then there was reference at one point to talking about students, if there was not enough room for them to eat, that they could go back to the classroom to eat, and I was wondering how we would have coverage for that while the teacher is eating as well?
Correct. So for elementaries, we're kind of, we're looking at the option of really hosing our students in the cafeteria and utilizing the stage. With 50 tables, we can get 100 students to 150 students in at one time. And as the weather gets better here in the fall, we'll utilize our outside areas before we utilize classrooms. If we were to utilize classrooms, the task force had said that it would be on a rotational basis, so that it just may be one day the sixth grade did, one day the fifth grade did, and then that way it would rotate. We would have our teachers supervise the students during that time if it was necessary, and then they, usually, we accommodate that by leaving after they're done with their supervision skills, so they can, they can go home right after their, if they're doing that supervision during a lunch period where they're eating with kids. That's not our desired goal to do in classroom eating. Mr. Fletcher likes when we don't eat in classrooms, because of all of the extra work that it does provide for, you know, when you have carpets and you have food, it just doesn't mix very well. So we think we can accommodate most of our students by staggering lunches out a little further. We've worked with Mrs. Berry about our cafeteria managers working with us to make sure those lunches could be extended. Most principals have said they can fit the students that they have at their schools right now with no problem, because of the amount of tables we have.
So since you brought it up about eating outside, when do we usually see that at 11:00 or 12:00 in the afternoon, you know, at noon, that we're able to have students outside to eat, because of the, I guess it's the 100-degree rule, or whatever it is?
Right. So usually when our, our temperature, if it's not called a red day or a yellow day, and it's a green day, that would be the time that they would be able to go outside, unless it's under a structure. And it's one of the favorite things kids like to do, but we definitely would only go outside and use outside if we're in-person, just like we normally would. The day is called, Ms. Hartley calls the day, and then our, our schools follow that inside activity or that outside activity. So when we're inside, we're not doing recess either during those times as well.
I think we answered that one. I just wanted to ask also, when you listed the self-contained classrooms...
Yes.
Did that include resource classrooms as well?
No. These would be classrooms where our students are receiving specialized instruction all day.
Okay.
And so it would not, it's mostly our C and D, lots of C and D students, not our A and B, and those would be, A and B would be those students that are receiving minutes on their IPs, they would be serviced in our regular classrooms. There may be pull-out, or there may be push-in to work with those students. We will work with groups for reading, because they'd just be gathered in the same area of the room, rather than having to regather them around a table where they're huddled into a solid mass. So the CDC guidelines were, were to kind of limit that. And also on the presentation that Dr. Gilbert showed with the benchmarks, it said to limit the, the field trips, right? No, no field trips. And so that's something that we had in our original plan as well, where that field trips would not occur whenever we went back to in-person learning right away.
And then, could you clarify just a little bit more regarding, like, PE and specials, and maybe for both levels, actually? I understand the idea of a virtual music class might work, I'm just trying to picture a virtual PE class, and what that would look like? It sounds like an unmitigated disaster, in my opinion, as a teacher, but, you know, I, I, maybe I'm not being creative enough in my head.
No, you're, you're, it's a good question. The PE would have to be adapted, and that's where, in the hybrid model, we would have to adapt and, and bring the smaller groups in. PE activities, what we provide our students to do, would have to be carefully thought out, so that we are social distancing the activity. And there's many activities that can happen in PE with the numbers that we have right now, between, between 12 and 23 in most of our classrooms, that we would be able to provide that opportunity. We also have additional teachers that come in during our block time to be able to assist and to minimize that, that cohort group, to make it smaller. So they would work together in tandem to be able to provide those activities, whether they be in the cafeteria, in the classroom, that's available at some of our schools that have available space, or outside.
For, for PE in the secondary, and I would say large gatherings where you have music and other, other elective programs of that nature, the, one of the things that I mentioned earlier, that we're fortunate, that we have a really curriculum, strong curriculum instruction team, where they've been working on, what is it going to look like in putting best practices in place of what is it going to look like for music, what is it going to look like for PE? The first part of that is, what does it look like in a locker room, right? And what, if they're going to change, and what is that? And so that's what we'll be working with our teachers in those areas, and the curriculum instruction, working with teachers, and they're already working with, in groups, to see what is the best way to address that. I think the biggest piece is, we're fortunate at the secondary, unlike the elementary, that we have space, and the key is getting them into open space, whether it's in our gyms, whether it's out on the fields, those type of things. I mentioned before, we're fortunate, even though it doesn't seem like it now, we are moving toward, it's gonna be cooler, gonna be, I said. But again, it's really making sure that how do we keep, the mitigation piece of wearing masks, keeping students with, with space, especially in those areas where we can actually utilize the larger spaces. But we're working closely with our curriculum instruction team, who's going to be working with our teachers to see what is the best way to, to do that.
Also, Ms. Brunner, for PE, for example, too, one area that I forgot to mention, is our PE teachers already do an excellent job of hot-day weather activities and rainy-day activities. They have moved the curriculum, our curriculum instruction team has worked with them, to move those lessons towards the hot part of the year, so that, as you know, there's many days that we don't have live activity outside, or active activity outside based on the heat. And so we follow those same protocols as well, and, and see what they would need for support to be able to do that. We need to listen and be able to support them.
It definitely seems like the, the cooler it can be, the better, because if we're going to stretch out lunches over a larger period of time, that cafegematorium, as they say in the Simpsons, is going to be absorbed with lunch for half the day, right? And so now we don't have a space for PE. And so now we don't have a space for PE. And then we have, in some cases, up to 24 kids in a classroom, in an elementary classroom, trying to do PE inside the classroom with like, you know, more air coming out of their mouths due to exertion. So yeah, I just see this as like, the cooler it can be, the better for that scenario.
Can I, can I just jump in on what, because I attended a PE class on Friday, which I didn't know I was going to be attending. Because we were observing students who were in drop-in. So there were like 18 students in this room spread out. And we were looking, you know, back, but looking over the shoulder of one little girl and the principal's explaining what was happening. And then two girls popped up in different parts of the room and did some stretches. And then very carefully, socially distancing, walked outside, did a lap and then stood in the shade and did some other things and then came back in. So I mean, talk about virtual, their teacher couldn't see them, but was waiting for them when they got back. And then they just sat down, didn't make a noise. They were, they didn't disrupt any other kids. And like, they got some exercise and it was good. And it was funny.
And we got to monitor kids when they're on campus. That's another issue that you don't have to worry about virtually, just saying.
These were third graders, too. These were third graders.
Just for 29 students. No, no, you never let a kid alone. All right.
But at the same time, the PE teacher had definite, yeah, creativity, but also there were, there was a matrix of things that they had to accomplish for those students and they did it, so.
So security in the junior highs and high schools, especially if we're going to encourage students to not use the restrooms at passing times, there aren't 42 kids in the bathrooms vaping and using the bathroom. Instead, I'm guessing we're going to encourage them to go during class, right? But then that requires security in the hallways to make sure they're distancing because the teachers can't monitor that. So I was wondering if we're adding security to the junior highs and high school hallways?
At this time, we haven't talked about adding security to the junior highs. I think what's, what's going to be important is when is the best time in order to address? You're still going to have students during class periods that are going to need to go to the restroom. Things that happen in the passing periods, we're going to have to come up with the best plan, I guess, I would say, for a lack of a better, other way to say it. And how can we mitigate when students are going to the bathroom? But we know there's going to be times where when you have to go, you just have to go. All right? But what can we do? And that's why I'm, I feel very fortunate of the principals that I have out in our schools. I can say this is what the plan's going to look like, but how that school flows and how they work with their security and their staff is going to be real important of what that is. The expectation isn't that the teachers are going to be doing something other than teaching.
Of course. But I guess my point is, I think in almost any plan that an administration comes up with, it might require a few more security folks out there. I'm just throwing that out there.
Yes, I would agree with that, or at least someone within their administrative team that's going to help with that. I would agree.
Are there any hard limits for class size? Are we setting that at all? So we have some kind of guarantee about spacing?
From the secondary, I would, I would, I don't know that, I wouldn't say that here's a guarantee of what a class size is going to be. I know the goal is going to be, especially with the staff that we have hired this year, is to put as many teachers in our schools that we have because we've had to address students in the online. So we know that we've hired new teachers. Our goal would be to keep class sizes down as much as we possibly can, as well as the space. Because at our schools, if we have an open room, the hope would be we'd have another class or another section. As for the hard line of what classes is going to be, I don't, I can't guarantee a number. I know that when the master schedules come out at the beginning of the year normally, I print them all. And I go through it because I want to see what are the class sizes that are going on. When we staff the schools, we staff the schools at the high school at 23.7. When we staff our junior high schools, we staff them at 23. So when I look at the master schedule, if I see huge numbers in the high 30s or even the mid 30s, I'm upset. Because I know that there's enough staffing that that shouldn't happen. Now, you're gonna have some classes of possibly, in a normal situation, you're going to have classes of 30-something. Usually it's 32, 34, it could be a 35. But you also have classes because of the type of class, it could be the numbers that you might have a 15 just because of the way that, whatever the kids are offering. So I understand what you're saying in the sense of class sizes. We will be vigilant on looking at what our class sizes are, which I do in the beginning of every year. But I would be doing it more often in this situation, knowing that we have to address class size. But it would be difficult to say that there would be a guarantee of a number. What I can guarantee you is I'm going to be looking at the numbers of all of our schools to make sure we're addressing what our numbers look like.
Ms. Brunner, for the elementary schools, we'll be working with every single one of the 31 schools to see how they can accommodate for larger classes that do occur. As I said, I pointed out, there are some that were in the pink and the light pink. All 25, 26 to 35 of those classrooms are still manageably low at 23 to 1 compared to some of our neighboring districts that are at 28 to 30, 31. But if we have classrooms, we do have some that were at the 27 mark right now. And as you, if you saw, and I know you did see the data, there's about three there at 27. We'll work with those sites to see what works best for that teacher. One of the accommodation pieces that we might be able to do is to bring another person in to assist at that, to get that group a little bit more divided out. If there's room and space available at schools, thankfully, we do have space available at schools right now based on the fact that our students are in COA. So we do have some classroom spaces available. But we also have some larger classroom spaces that we might be able to work with to move two individuals and social distance them a little bit wider. But we would be providing some supports. As I talked to principals again today, and we have meeting every, every two weeks, either whether it be virtual or in-person. And we would provide the supports that are needed and that are best for that site. We have some sites that work it out through rotation of students if they have a grade level that's larger. Or if they have just one grade level larger, we can even that out. One classroom within that grade level that's larger, we'll work with them on evening those out when transitions occur.
So another question. What is the plan? Let's say at some point we get to fully in-person, right? And let's say we're at 3% and then it goes up to 6 or 7% positivity rates in the community. Do we have, like, it doesn't seem like we have, in, from what I've seen, like, any kind of metrics or triggers that are going to indicate what's going to happen in those situations? We don't seem to have some kind of stakeholder group to make that decision right now. I just feel like that's kind of a big, open, like, question mark that we really, I haven't heard at least what that looks like.
If there's a spike at a school or a, or a program, or it's going to be the county health department that works with us and gives us the next steps. They'll be the ones that let us know what the mitigation pieces are for that. Is that correct? Ms. Hartley?
If we're talking about a spike within our district, but are you talking about a spike within the whole community?
I'm guessing both of those would probably align, but maybe not, but yeah.
So if it's a community spike, we can see it in the data. And as we discussed, we'd look at that two-week, not to jump to something, but to look at that two-week. But if we have a spike internally, we'll follow, follow whatever. And we're on the, she's on the phone often and frequently with Maricopa County Health. They would guide us through that process of what we need to do, just as we have in the past, with them telling us exactly what needs to be mitigated at the site. Ms. Hartley?
So I'm hearing you say like, there'd be a two-week window of looking at it and then we'd have to revert back to virtual instruction or hybrid.
Decision would be made, it would be, just like looking at the data for two weeks going into a decision, we would look at two weeks coming out of that decision as well.
Okay.
But there would be discussion around what, what's really causing that? And what, in a little bit more detail, probably from Maricopa County, too, to provide a specific data as what could be relevant in that spike.
And I think it's going to be important that we take that data, just as we are now, of moving forward, at least in the recommendation of going to a hybrid to full, that we'd have to look at, now what is the data telling us again? As we evaluate that and did it move from this color to that color? Now what does that look like? And we have to have discussions as an administration, of course, with you as the board, as to now where should we be going if we have to move back? What does that look like?
And if those cases were, you know, within our district or within a site, it wouldn't be that two-week lag time. We would be working with them real, we would be working with them real time in, you know, finding out that we had those positive cases and then what their strategies would be for us to mitigate any more exposure.
And so if I heard correctly, last week, it was two independent exposures without contact outside that then causes concern?
That's what the requirement is to report cases. But we report every case so that way we can work directly with them. That really doesn't have any bearing on the action that they would take. That's just the requirement or the threshold to where you have to report. But we will be reporting every case so we can work with them through that.
And then the communication that I asked about earlier, just to clarify one more time, there's going to be website information for each site, right?
Yes.
Okay. And then if students are in a classroom with someone who was positive, they will be told? Even if they weren't within six feet of them, they may not get quarantined, but they will be informed?
Right.
Just clarifying.
Yep, there would be a notification going out to that class. And then, you know, depending on how many people actually had to quarantine, we'd either make phone calls or send a notice.
Okay. My last question, and I know it's a long list, sorry. Subs. So obviously we use now an outside agency for subs. This agency is also used by many other school districts. And quite frequently, these subs are, let's say, on the more experienced end of their career. And so have we gotten information or guarantees from the subcontractor that we will in fact have enough folks, not just for normal times, but assuming there's some kind of exposure at a site? Like maybe, I don't know what percentage you'd add on to that, maybe a 10%? I don't know what it would be. But what kind of guarantees do we have that teachers aren't going to now have to cover during their half-hour prep, another class and then get exposed to a whole host of another kids? And then another teacher comes in and another teacher comes in to cover because we won't have subs?
Ms. Brunner, we'd like to defer that to Dr. Nance, our expert in sub coverages and everything else, HR.
Thank you, Ms. Brunner. We actually are, have been working with ESI, who is our substitute coordinator. We currently have over 200 substitutes that are available and wanting and needing to work. And so they are willing to come both virtual and in-person. As we've been working with them, we've been training them for the virtual aspect of substituting. But then also in some PPE and personal health safety training for them coming on campus as well. We recently just updated our training for our sub-coordinators at the site so they could support them coming on. I can't say we won't ever have a classroom covered. I know you were asking about, you know, somebody on their prep time. When and if that happens, our preference would be we have some backup, a tier one, tier two at the site. So if there's not a substitute who's able to take the class, who's our tier two? We do have some extra personnel as we transition back from Chandler Online to the brick and mortar. Some extra teachers that will be also going out to assist and be extra personnel on that campus that can help cover as well.
But you understand my concern, right? Because, I mean, in normal times, we have a hard time. And I've heard from many, many, many teachers that they have had to cover when COVID is not happening. And so I guess this is a red flag that, that, you know, I don't know what the ratio is now compared to before and how many of those are shared by other districts. I know many subs will sub, not just for us, but for other districts. So when we say 200, it may not really be 200 on the one day, right? Because maybe 50 are going to Gilbert and 40 are going to Kyrene or whatever, you know, whatever it is. And so this is a big concern of teachers from what I've heard.
Yes, very much. We've heard the same thing. And Ms. Brunner, the only thing that we would not do at the elementary level is to break a class up and put it in other classrooms because that would mitigate our cohorting strategy as well as the social distancing. So what we revert to is the strategies that Dr. Nance spoke of. But also, we do have staff on and as a principal, too. Many of our principals step up and they cover when needed. So we would use available staff to cover that may not be connected to an actual classroom at that time or alternative staff that might be there and just rotate so that the same person isn't doing it all the time. But I know, and I'm so blessed with the fact that we do have principals and assistant principals and deans that actually go into classrooms and cover to avoid that stress on, on the system.
So I guess I'm just asking, maybe we could do something proactively to try to reach out and get more subs in the system now?
And you know what, Mrs. Brunner? We actually just had advertisement go out for additional substitutes, just this current week, on both marquees and in-site newsletters, as well as ESI's doing another push so we can have everybody trained.
Thank you.
We all, we already have a permanent sub at every site right now. The, when the online transition's over, again, there were a number of teachers. They would become permanent subs at the sites. And in discussions with Wendy in particular, we want to promote it at the local school. That if parents, retired teachers or parents are out there even want emergency certification or substitute certificate, we've done that in the past where they just say, I'll, I'll take care of this school. So we're promoting that as well.
Thank you, Dr. Castile. Thank you, Mrs. Brunner. Are there any other questions? Mr. Evans?
Senator President, don't you have any questions?
Oh, I kind of do, but I'm a little bit waiting, but go ahead.
It's time.
Well, so in these models, what happens when, let's say, a class or a portion of a class does need to be quarantined? Those students will be home for 10 to 14 days, depending on, on the situation. And how are they going to get their instruction?
It's a good question. So thankfully, we've beefed up our virtual environment. And so, and our teachers are using the virtual environment so well. I mean, they are, they are, they have done a wonderful job. And our curriculum instruction team has worked with coaching hours and trainings to assist. There are options to be able to take a group of students or a larger group of students and put them in a virtual setting until the quarantine period would be over. And that may be, it all depends on what's happening there. It may be that teacher, it may have to be a different teacher if that teacher's not able to do the instruction. But we do have the ability to move to virtual. And I don't think it was ever our intent to leave it behind, our, our ability to have Google Connect and Google Meet and our teachers working in those environments, it was meant to build. And so we would have that opportunity to be able to be transitional when needed, where needed, and based on the number that's needed in that respect.
And I think from the secondary perspective, currently, when we have students that are out, unfortunately, it's getting that, that content or that work to the student. And so as Mr. Narducci said, the use of Google Classroom is really going to help with that because now it's not, let's see how many packets we can get up or whatever the work is so that somebody can pick that up or a student, it now can be done virtually and getting that information to them.
Okay. How are kids going to be, is there going to be a check-in process on the distance learning days during the hybrid program?
So if, if hybrid was an option for elementary that was chosen, we would do a classroom meeting with, but it would be at one point during the day, probably where our classroom meeting would cover their social emotional piece. And that would be the check-in. Our attendance is based on student engagement. And so as long as we know the students are doing the work that they were assigned to do and turn that in, we can count that as an attendance day. But at the elementary level, we would have, if, in a hybrid, we definitely would have one contact with that teacher. And then of course, they'll be available, but the fact is, remember, they're teaching a group. And so they won't be teaching that group that's at home. So there may be one point that, the day that they would have that engagement. As I said, also, it would be also good for those kids to see other kids in the classroom at one point, whether it be 10 minutes at the beginning of the day while we're doing attendance and then doing an activity to promote social emotional learning.
From the secondary perspective, I think it's real important to note on the, the distance learning day, the teachers are, are teaching in direct instruction in, in person. distance learning day, the teachers are, are teaching in direct instruction in person. So as we shared with one of our slides, there's a variety of ways of what the students would be doing on that off day or that distance learning day that the teacher would have established that they're going to work on or complete on that off day, which then shows the engagement of the work that they're doing.
Okay. Thank you. I think that if none, none of the other board members have questions, I would, I would like to, I guess, hear some of your opinions about, about these. Because I think as a board, we should probably not so much ask the questions of them, but also discuss amongst ourselves what our, our views and thoughts are about this. Mrs. Brunner, would you like to start?
Not really, but I will. I feel like I've taken up a lot of time already. So it has been very difficult for many, many children in virtual learning. It's been difficult for teachers and for family members. Kids are struggling, especially the younger they are, the harder it is to sit in front of a computer all day. And, you know, being on the other end of that every day in a district where I have to be live all day with students, which, you know, we have a little bit different program here in Chandler, but it can be very draining to be, you know, interacting all day long on the computer, especially as a young person, being able to sit still like that. And obviously, you know, COA and the virtual instruction, especially for the younger students, there's a lot of opportunities for movement breaks and, you know, those kinds of things. And I think COA has done a wonderful job. And I really appreciate Mr. Narducci and all the folks who contributed to that design and constantly being open to tweaking it and modifying it to, to fit all the folks that are participating in it. I don't know if you want my long spiel now, or do you want to hear from others?
Go ahead.
Mix it up a little bit, maybe some other folks.
You can go ahead.
So, you know, also as having a student, a teenager, who is also affected by this, obviously, the older kids are missing their friends. And you can't deny the fact that, that school has a social element to it. It's not our main purpose, but it is part of what we provide to students. And our teachers have been moving mountains and doing amazing things in this difficult situation. But just a few weeks ago, we told the community that we wanted to emphasize two things. One, that we provide quality instruction to our students as best as we can, given the circumstances, and that we provide stability. And in fact, when we first talked about this several weeks ago, I was kind of on the fence with the stability part. I was really like metric, metric, metric. You know, let's just look at the metrics and follow those, right? And after talking with many folks, you know, I kind of came over to the other side of stability is also a value as well as following the metrics. We made a commitment to students and families and staff that we would follow the virtual model through the quarter as we work to prepare for in-person learning. I think we all know we, we have to pull off the Band-Aid at some point when we deem that it's safe. And there is no clear cut line for when that's, when safe is, right? And I think that's what's really getting all of us, that what is safe? Or less dangerous, maybe, is a better way to put it. And so we've been working to prepare. I really appreciate all the hard work that both of you and many, many other people have put into the different plans. And when we announced this, several hundred families moved from COA to virtual instruction after we mentioned that they would at least have a date when they knew they were coming back. The vast majority of teachers have reported to us that they want to wait until second quarter, three times as many as those who said they want to go back full-time. Even assuming that we remove all furniture, including those things that are attached to walls, except for desks and chairs for students, virtually, none of our classes will be able to space six feet apart, especially when COA students come back second quarter. At the secondary level, we'll be lucky if we get three feet spacing in, in the classrooms. And they're going to be sitting in there, I'm guessing we're still sticking with the block schedule, for almost two hours at a time. These classrooms have no windows that open. The six-foot distancing will not be met on the buses either. If you looked at the picture, the plan includes students who will sit directly behind other students. And the recommendations are that, you know, in general, that we have less than 10 people in a space whenever possible. Obviously, that's going to get blown out of the water in schools, not even close. The Maricopa County Health Department shared with us last week that the number one preventative measure to prevent the spread of the virus in our community is the six-foot social distancing, which we're going to be unable to meet. And we're not taking any measurements of students or staff prior to them coming on campus. We're not taking temperatures at random times either. Some claim this is about choice, but please be aware that some students do not have a choice. There are classes that cannot be offered in COA. For our gifted students, for students with special needs, the dual-language programs, the English language learners and students in the traditional model schools, we, we don't have a good fit in the COA program. When we go in person, these families are forced to place their children in an environment that does not meet the six-foot spacing guidelines. In addition, many teachers report, request to be online could not be met because we didn't have enough students sign up for online options. There are also staff members who wanted to teach online and were not able to. So when people say that the teachers had a choice, that they could have taught online, there were people who wanted to that were not given that position. And it wasn't on anyone's fault. It's just the way the numbers fell. This entire situation is not the district's fault. Staff have done an amazing job at creating options in COA. And it comes down to this, that all Arizona schools have been woefully underfunded by the state legislature. Our local community has generously supported our students through overrides. And the district has kept administrative costs low. And yet, we still cannot come close to meeting the health professionals' recommendations. We don't know what the long-term effects of this virus are. There are indications, there could be lifelong circulatory and pulmonary consequences, even for those who are positive without symptoms. Maybe that will be a thing and maybe it won't. We don't know. Even if only 1% of our students become positive, that's 450 students who will have COVID. And if it matches the 5% that we're at in positivity rate testing, that's 2,750 students that will be impacted. So obviously, my point here is that because of this, I don't think it's wise right now to go back to the fully in-person model until we reach somewhere around a 3% positivity rate. So that will allow us some room to fluctuate up to 5%. Interestingly, last week, we were told 7% was the criteria for hybrid because it gave us a window to move up to 10% so that we could stay in hybrid and not have to jump out of it really quickly. But they did not provide that for the in-person. They just said, oh, 5% in-person, there's no window there. So then we jump back to, to virtual again. And that is not fair to families who are trying to figure out childcare and are trying to figure out, you know, stability in the lives for their children. So I don't want to see us booting kids back and forth. We don't want our students flip-flopping. And we want stability and quality of instruction. So I guess my viewpoint is let's stay with virtual instruction until we're at a spot where we know we can hang out at that spot of in-person instruction for a significant amount of time without going all over the place. I'm not going to go into all my opinions on, on hybrid, but suffice to say that the vast majority of administration here, as well as the teachers, are, realize that hybrid takes a lot of extra effort on everyone else, everyone's part and provides very little benefit to students because you can't do what you normally would do in a classroom with one half of the kids. And it's, you know, and I'll just stop there on that. I'm sure some other people will have opinions on hybrid. So thank you.
I guess I just, I think would like to clarify just one thing that you said. And as we are looking at the, the in-person model, the green, as is shown on the, the classroom modality recommendations, that green is under, has to meet all three green metrics. And I think that Dr. Gilbert had said something to the effect that, that that was, and, and the, Mrs. Flanagan last week said that that is really not going to happen at all until we end up seeing a vaccine. And all of that just basically means that, that in-person that they're talking about there means basically you go back to normal. And it's going to be a very long time before we ever get back to that normal, where there's, where there's no masks, there's no social distancing, everything goes back to normal, they can all have the field trips. It's going to be, it's going to be a while. To get down below that 10 per 100,000 is going to be extremely difficult without the vaccine. I see us being in a, a yellow zone for much of this year, to be honest with you. Unless a vaccine does come, come through and, and people are willing to get vaccinated, there's no guarantee that we have, we will have enough people who are interested in getting vaccinated that will drive those numbers down. Anyway, I just wanted to, I just felt like there was a little bit of...
I actually was only referring to the positivity, right? I wasn't even referring to that because I don't think that metric is possible if we don't do something about testing. So I was just looking at positivity, just to clarify.
Sounds good. Mrs. McGee, did you want to say anything or talk about, about your impressions?
I guess the only thing I have, because I made the motion, so you know where, where I stand, basically was the Health Department representative who spoke with us last week and, and made the, you know, recommendation that we do follow the benchmarks, which would, you know, put us into returning in some sort of a hybrid social distancing. And you gentlemen and the, the rest of our staff have done an excellent job, I think, as far as our mitigation strategies and, you know, what we have in place. And for those students and teachers on campus now, what we will continue to have in place. And I have visited a campus and I think it was what Mr. Evans said, you know, the principal said, you know, trust us, you know, we will follow these protocols, we will make it work. And this particular principal that I talked with, you know, was in favor of having the students back in the classroom. So I guess, again, I made the motion, so you know where I stand. Thank you.
Ms. Love?
There's a lot that has been said. And, you know, I did take a tour yesterday. And it felt really at ease with what I saw, you know, because we hear a lot about the plans, but, you know, it's different when you see them. And, you know, I really want to thank Hartford for giving me that tour. And, you know, I felt a little bit more at ease going into the day, especially, you know, I read through the presentation, of course, like the presentation, I felt like needed some context. But I think that I would feel more comfortable with the secondary hybrid option if we were going to go to, to a hybrid option. I would feel comfortable if that was more of a discussion that we were having, you know, regarding like our start in that second, in that second quarter, as opposed to in two weeks-ish. I don't feel comfortable with the, the staggered start right now. And I mean, if you present this to me at the end of September, you know, for, you know, the second quarter, maybe, you know, I'd want to see the numbers. I am very pleased with, you know, where the numbers are headed right now. But I'm just, I feel that we're making a decision based off of two weeks and that's something that I heard, right? But, you know, when we're considering, you know, that sometimes we have these spikes after a holiday and that we might appear red in certain parts of, of the district, that's considered a knee-jerk reaction. But I feel like this two-week model is kind of a knee-jerk reaction, you know, just going back after two weeks of, of numbers. I would like to see more weeks of us, you know, going in the right direction before having a conversation about like a staggered start. And even talking about what we're going to do for that second quarter, I feel like that discussion maybe needs to be held, you know, once we get closer to the second quarter. Now, I do understand that, you know, there are some things that we have to look at in preparation for this, like hiring on, maybe food service, bus drivers, you know, things, like roles like that, that, you know, we lost. And so I think that definitely needs to be a discussion as well. I hear you on the achievement gaps. Like I said, in my area of work, when students are not in school, they are at risk of a lot of things, right? And, you know, I think that we've all been really centered on the achievement gaps, especially with the conversations around equity. But I'm struggling, and I think I, you know, had kind of echoed these sentiments before, with us talking about sending kids back to school to close the achievement gap after kids have been traumatized by this whole COVID thing and being out and we acknowledge their social emotional needs, you know, are going to be an issue coming in the gate. I think what is our expectation of our children and of our teachers coming in and their social emotional needs are everywhere? And we're expecting excellence? That's not a very trauma-informed thing for me. And so I would like to see a plan, you know, to address the social emotional needs in a trauma-informed way that takes into consideration that our students may not be performing the same way they did pre-COVID as they would when they come back. You know, I've seen the pictures of, of students crying at the computer, you know, it's really heartbreaking, it is. And, you know, I hear it. My niece, you know, was one of those kids who spent time crying at her computer when she, she started. But can we say that that is due to virtual solely or the fact that children are in a very interesting place, being at home for so long? And, you know, things are scary and they may be reacting to things that they see on the news or that they hear their parents talking about, or, you know, some of them still see their friends, you know, things that their friends are talking about. And, you know, I know in my practice, people are, you know, their thoughts are around like this is the end of the world, the sky is falling. And, you know, if we have students who, you know, their parents are, they're hearing talk like this in the community, I wonder what that effect that has on, you know, some of the kids that we're seeing who are really struggling in the areas of social emotional needs. So I guess, all this to say, I do agree with Ms. Brunner in terms of, you know, we need that consistency. And I thought that was why we voted in the first place, to consider a start in the beginning of that second quarter, because we wanted kids to have consistency and not moving up and down, up and down. And it's really only, what, like two, three weeks before the end of this quarter about? So, you know, for me, and, you know, I've heard other parents echo the same sentiment, what is the difference if we, you know, stagger them now versus if we start second quarter? And I want to reiterate too, that second quarter, I'm totally down, you know, I want to see how many weeks we have, like with these great results. You know, I want to see how many weeks we have, like with these great results. You know, and hopefully it's not just a hybrid option that we're talking about. Hopefully we get to that elementary staggered start and get to that return full in-person in that second quarter. I would like to see that. I would like to not have conversations about hybrid. And I would like us to get to a place where we could talk about fully going back to school. But I think for me, right now, I'm not in that place where I feel comfortable with the recommendations going forward today. But I do appreciate all the work that both of you do and all the work that, you know, everybody has done in the district because it's a hard job and a hard decision. So, thank you.
Your turn, Mr. Evans.
So, first of all, you know, everybody talks about the new normal. But what you've done in this presentation with all of your staff and providing that graphic right there, that graphic may be the way we live for the next few years. We don't know. Because of the way things will change, that will probably be where we'll have to go to deal with the anxiety of the change we all have to make from, you know, from month to month. We just don't know. We just don't know what this holds. Unless we believe that this is not real. And, you know, as news is reporting the last couple of days, and this is one of the biggest problems, because it's us, the parents, that turn the news on, that bring the anxiety to the kids. Unless you believe that only 6% of the deaths reported actually have anything to do with COVID-19, right? So that's what I heard this morning on the news. So it depends on where you stand there. But this is what we're going to live with for the very foreseeable future. Because we are trying to make a decision today that will have to ebb and flow. We don't know how long we'll have to deal with this stuff for, right? So it's not so much to me that even we are worried about individual safety pockets. We have to be worried about the bigger picture and the longer term. And that's why that trust comment that Lisa Shore made to me the other day is so important. Because we have to trust that people are going to take care of one another, regardless of where their political feelings lie. They're going to do the right things for the people that is there. Why? Why are we here? What, as an educator or a staff member, what made us choose to work in this setting with these children and help them and prepare them and give them the tools and the resources they need to be able to have the confidence to move forward, right? So that's where I am right now in terms of those tools and resources. People here do a phenomenal, how do you teach somebody how to read? Well, guess what? A lot of parents are finding out that it's, yeah, how do you do that? Because my first grader is sitting right here and I'm not helping them. And yeah, I'm taking a picture of them under the chair, frustrated. But all they're doing is mirroring my frustration, right? It's hard work to do that. So I guess the point is, have we created for the, that's why I like option D here, have we created for young children who haven't had the exposure to school yet? Have we created and brought to them those tools and resources to help them be successful and navigate like they're going to have to navigate for who knows how long now? And make those changes as the metrics change? So for me, option D, it's miniscule. It's only two weeks, right? But that is like an orientation that sets, helps set the expectation. It's controlled for people who are educators, who have anxiety about this. You have the tools and we will help provide the resources you need to make the transition. So to me, that option is critical, that we move forward with that. Help kids, help kids who don't have the tools or any of the resources they need. The other piece, though, is having sat in a couple of classes, and I'll do so again on Friday, at the secondary level. It's a process. And yeah, maybe it started out terrible, but it's been getting better every single, not every single week, every single class that teachers teach, it gets a little bit better. Why? Because they're building relationships with their students, right? They're getting better at it, the students are getting more comfortable with it. Sat in a class yesterday and I was like, these kids act like they know this guy already. They're comfortable with him already. Why would we make a change to that when there are some really important practices? Education's got to change. There are some really important practices that we will take forward when we're back to students and teachers in the classroom together every single day. And like, from the assessment standpoint, there are things we're doing now that probably we should have been doing 50 years ago to do pre-assessments that maybe now we're stuck having to do so we know who these guys are, who these kids are in the classroom. And we can progress monitor because of the fact that we can't see them. We have to learn a different way. So to me, some of these things we're learning now and finally doing, we will move forward with and education will improve. Yeah, parents aren't happy that it's taking longer. But one secondary person, actually, this is kind of, I've heard this a couple of different times, but she wrote it out for me. She said, we still, so in a hybrid model, we'd still have to come up with assignments and post in Google Classroom on a non-kid day, when kids aren't there, for that, the virtual groups, plus do the grading. So it's essentially the same as teaching in person and teaching asynchronously. So we would have to be still doing both of those things that, all those, two or three different slides said they wouldn't have to be doing that. But theoretically, they really would. So why not just do what 72% of them said and wait to help them hone what they're doing now? It's getting better every class for them. And look at where we'll be when we get to October 13th. So that's right.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. So you're saying you like three of those checks, but not four? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah. I'm saying we're going to have to live with all of them for who knows how many years. If this is real.
I feel like we have a lot of families who are still struggling with devices, with online learning, whether it is from, especially in, I mean, there are still individuals that don't have devices yet. And I feel like we are doing that, those children, a horrible disservice, that we cannot provide them the education because they don't have the tools that they need. And that is what online learning is doing for them. It's not doing anything. The data, the metrics and the benchmarks have changed so much in the last few weeks. And as I've said before, that we have to adapt to that. I do feel that, yes, we did talk to families about staying the course. But when you find something that isn't working for a large number of families, you have to make adjustments, you have to change. And with the changing data and what we've seen in the benchmarks, I think it's time to reevaluate what we've been doing. I believe we also need to provide that promised choice that we told our families, that there would be in-person instruction in this district. We're not giving that to them. That promise was made a long time ago. And we had families choose whether they wanted to be in-person or online. But with the circumstances that followed with Governor Ducey closing the schools until the 17th and then us continuing to keep them closed, we took that choice away from all of those families. It's kind of like, I'm afraid to go into the pool at the deep end. But does that mean that I need to prevent everybody else from going into the deep pool too because I'm afraid? No. We need to provide those opportunities for everyone. We need to provide that choice. And we need to not make those decisions to prevent them from having the choices that they think are right for their family. Everybody has a different opinion of what is safe. Some parents will drive their children to school every day because they don't want them to walk. They don't think it's safe. But others will happily allow their children to walk to school. We have people with the ATVs that don't wear helmets and they think they're safe. And others won't let their children get near them. It all depends on what you view as safe. And there is no consistent idea and definition of what is safe. It's individualized and it's for each family, it's different. The families who do want to send their children to school know the risks that they're taking. They know that their child could possibly get this. There's many, there are families that have already had this and had COVID, yet we're preventing them from having an in-person instruction. I think that the families can, they should be allowed to make those decisions. They're informed decisions. And from very early on, I was involved with a parent participation preschool where we learned that the parents are the primary and first educators of their children during their lives. This is all part of that. Parents know what's good for their children. I think that I've looked at the data that should be coming out tomorrow. And Maricopa County should be looking at a 5.1 positivity rate, with Arizona down to a 4.6. The metrics support reopening in a hybrid method. We have to trust our, the experts, the epidemiologists and those who look and gather the data. This is why they gave the school boards the actual tools to be able to make the decisions based on what their community is experiencing. In some areas, it would not be appropriate to open schools in a hybrid mode, I believe, because their positivity rates are too high. But in areas and pockets all over the state, schools are making the decision, school districts are making the decisions to be, to open their schools based on these metrics. And I think that when we say, well, we're not, you know, this was dumped on us, well, the bottom line is, we've been given the tools and the instructions on how to do it. And we need to follow those instructions. And we're not if we don't reopen. I truly believe that, we talk about trauma. But I believe we're inflicting more trauma upon our kids by not opening these schools than we would be if we just let them stay at home. I think that we are doing, we are increasing the achievement gaps all over this district and that we need to keep our promise of equity and get these kids back in school. That's my opinion. So if there's really no more other discussion from the board, anyone? I would like to go ahead and we'll do a roll call vote this evening. Mrs. Brunner?
Before you start, can you, can we know what, Karen, what the options are again?
What's up there?
The motion that, what I propose is what you want to know. For elementary, option D, moving to option C. If the benchmarks remain positive or improve. And for secondary, option B, moving to option C. Again, if the benchmarks remain positive at that point.
Mr. Evans, were you going to make them? Oh, okay. Okay. I didn't know if you were going to make a...
So we'll go ahead and vote, Mrs. Brunner?
No.
Mr. Evans? Ms. Love?
No.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Mr. Evans, did you want to...
Madam President, may I make a motion?
Yes.
I make a motion to do all the stuff that Mrs. McGee said in terms of the transitions, not knowing what the metrics will hold. But I start with option D for elementary. D isn't dog for elementary, staggered start September 14th and continuing September 21st. And for secondary, option C, return fully in-person October 13th, assuming the metrics still hold. And that's my motion.
Could I clarify, please? Are you saying also to, are you just doing elementary?
No, I said elementary, option D. So September 14th, transitioning again, staggering September 21st and then returning fully in-person October 13th, depending on metrics. And then for secondary, option C, return fully in-person October 13th. No hybrid.
Is there a second? I will second. Is there any discussion? Mrs. McGee?
No, I have no discussion, except I could live with that, even though I made the prior motion. I really feel that's important, especially on the elementary level, to get our kids back in class. And I think, you know, this is, since the first motion was voted down, then I think this is a good compromise because it does get the elementary at least back in class.
I have a question. So what does it mean if the metric supports it? What does that mean specifically?
Oh, so moving forward, so I'm anticipating October 13th. We don't know what that holds. So if the metrics support us being able to go, no.
But we had a discussion earlier, so I'm trying to clarify. Does that mean 5% positivity or lower? Or does that mean all three are in green?
It means what Dr. Gilbert said.
It means yellow.
What did you say, Dr. Gilbert?
It basically means yellow across the board for the entire region.
Okay, so we meet the criteria for hybrid, but then instead we do in-person?
Again, so if it supports the metrics. So no, we wouldn't do what it didn't qualify for. And I trust them to make sure that it happens the right way.
I still think there's a misunderstanding a little bit. When we say return fully in-person, we're also talking about mitigation techniques that are necessary, even though the district is, I'm sorry, even though the county and the state are calling it hybrid model, okay? When you look at all of the mitigation techniques, you can have in-person, fully in-person with everybody on campus. But if you are masking, if you are doing the handwashing techniques and things like that, the sanitation techniques, you are still able to, that is still considered the yellow mitigation strategies, which is considered the hybrid. to, that is still considered the yellow mitigation strategies, which is considered the hybrid with mitigation. So I think that there's a confusion between the terminology hybrid that is used, or a difference in the, the words hybrid that is used by the state and the county versus what we're talking about, a hybrid where you, you have various ABs or morning, afternoons or whatever that is. In fact, by, by having fully in person, you can still have a hybrid when people are wearing masks. Is that correct?
Correct. And in the D option, just to go back to where we meant it, is that's our students that are in virtual learning right now. So that's a portion of our students. COA is still impacting, so the 6,000 students that are there remain there while we have D in play. The fully is that, then our schools would be fully open to those students that are staying online in the Chandler Online Academy would be able to join the others. So in that regards, that is a hybrid district model of having certain number, a large number of cohort in the online model, joining the kids that would be in the in-person model. And then also, Mrs. Brunner, you had given me a compliment that I want to clarify. On the COA online class, the heavy lifting was done with our curriculum instruction team, Dr. Edgar and Ms. Katie Mo, who spent like 24/7 getting that plan together. So thank you, I did have some input. Dr. Nance did as well, Larry Rother did as well, Dr. Gilbert did as well, but they did an exceptional job in our IRC coaches. I just wanted to make sure I gave credit where credit was due.
I just want to clarify because if you look at the Maricopa County website, it says that hybrid learning parentheses, some students in physical buildings and some students distance learning. It's not about whether you're wearing a mask or not necessar, and if you look at, I believe that it was communicated to us last week that even in the green, those mitigation efforts would still be in place.
There's also an additional graphic that has the three lines that talk about the different, and I don't, let me find which one it's, I don't think.
Well, you could always go to the, the car tires that Mr. Narducci, so interesting talk, he talked about. You didn't talk about, well, they're finding that, you didn't talk about the spare tire.
There, that one. The safety benchmark protocols. When you're in the green, they're not even recommending maskings. Or symptom screening.
I believe they just passed something in the last week that said all the schools should have masks, did they not? Did that not just happen?
And this is what, they recommend them, I think. It wasn't, but, I'm not sure what level you're, at what level governmental level you're I do think that our high school students are, I think Dr. Gilbert made a very good point, that so many of these are looking at their, their graduation, or their, their GPAs and of course, the credits that they'll be able to get to prepare them for college and career. I fear that by not starting them with a hybrid model, that we undermine our own, our own metrics and our own goals by not assisting them with our Journey 2020 goals, that we undermine that by not providing those additional opportunities for those, for those students.
So I agree with your statement about the fact that some students don't even have the ability to participate because they don't have devices. But in the current model, what they're doing right now, they have more access to a teacher and more time in the material where they don't have to do it by themselves. In a hybrid model, they'll have, well, they'll have to prioritize a lot more, but they won't necessarily be in that subject matter unless they absolutely choose to. So I feel like as it gets better every day, they are, the teachers and the students together are seeing more material and experiencing more material and learning more. And, and why take that away from them for three weeks when, when it's getting better and better every day? That's just my point. Obviously, for the students who don't have devices yet, that's not helping them at all and we have to fix that, right?
Are there any other questions or comments?
I just want to add, so if you look on their website, it says a new school day and it's for all three metrics, red, yellow and green. And it has stuff like masks always on, wash your hands, alternate pickup and departures, partitions on every other stall in the bathroom, staggered seating outside if possible for lunch, et cetera. And that's for all three metrics. So I just wanted to clarify what, what that, and that's what I always had assumed, that when we got into the green, we'd still be doing all these protocols, right? And they probably are needed even more now that we have smaller distancing distance. And so just to clarify, like our expectations, I would guess, would align with what Maricopa County's expectations are.
And actually, thank you for saying that.
I would certainly want to have mitigation techniques when we got into the, the green anyway until we, until, this is completely under control because I think it's, it's one of those things that, you know, if you are not diligent about, and as Mr. Evans was saying, trusting the people that are working with our students and in, out in our sites. If we, we have to be able to trust them to keep the protocols, keep the hand washing, keep the masking and, and keep all of these things to prevent, to keep people safe and prevent the spread of this. It's, it's all about the mitigation. And once we, I fear that if we let up before a vaccine is widely used, things will just come bouncing back, so.
Madam President?
We'll have to be diligent. Yes, Dr. Gilbert?
I was just going to mention with the masks, I think it's important to note, regardless of the mitigation strategies that are here, it's still a requirement of the state. It's still a requirement that the board actually approved in a board meeting, so I would think that that is going to continue unless you change it. Just as a, sorry to interrupt, but just as a note of clarification.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Madam President, also a note of clarification for Mr. Evans's motion while it's on the table still. Our students that are in Chandler Online Academy, even if we were to go full October 13th, would still have the option to stay in Chandler Online Academy throughout the year and would still have the choice to come back to full in-person learning. I just wanted to make sure that was clear because I think the way I said it, it may have sounded like everybody was going in person on the 13th in your motion and I didn't think that was exactly, so Chandler Online Academy Elementary Connect would be available to our families throughout the year.
It's the same with secondary.
Great. So, yes, Ms. Love?
What would that look like? You know, if people did return for the staggered start and we had people who wanted to stay on, you know, virtual? Would it even be virtual or would it just be homework?
No. So the Chandler Online Academy, totally something different. So you're asking me about the virtual piece, Ms. Love? So in the virtual, we had some parents that moved students from the Chandler Online Academy to virtual. And it was stated that when they move or when the board makes the decision to move or if they do to in-person, they would go, that we wouldn't be going back and forth unless it was at the quarter. If we have some families that this is a hardship for, we would work with them at the individual school site. Our principals were more than happy to do that this morning when we discussed that they would be given assignments and be able to check in with their teacher and be able to get credit for the end of the quarter. And then they can make that decision whether they want to move to the model that's approved by the board or, or if they want to go to Chandler Online Academy. If they want to go to Chandler Online Academy, it'd be an open enrollment to Chandler Online Academy at the quarter. And then we just look at space availability and be able to approve those as they come across our desks. And then if it's the opposite way, of course, we would at quarter, well, before quarter here, we would be surveying or giving a, not a survey, but a enrollment intention for our Chandler Online families to see which they're planning to do for the second quarter, if they're planning to continue in Chandler Online or if they're planning to come back to their open enrolled or boundary school.
How, what's the transition like if you were to go from virtual and, you know, you moved to COA? What would that transition look like for families? Is that a pretty easy transition or is COA in a different place than virtual?
That's a very good question. COA uses some different curriculums. Florida Virtual is the curriculum that is used. However, our curriculum and instruction team are utilizing some other outreaches. They do use Google Classroom and Google Connect to provide other types of curriculum and learning with students. So in that regard, it's a very similar platform, but they do have a different platform for the Florida Virtual. Second quarter, we are looking at other, other curriculums to be able to augment the primary grade levels, to make it a little bit more, less text dependent. As we know, Florida Virtual is very text dependent. To be able to give that opportunity for students to be able to learn and grow as they're learning phonemic awareness and phonics skills and basic pre-literacy skills to get into fluency. So similar in our district-wide curriculums, but they are utilizing a different platform with Florida Virtual, which will be beefed up.
I guess, I guess I would like to hear like Mr. Gilbert's thoughts, Dr. Gilbert's thoughts about this change because then, you know, our secondary students wouldn't start till the 13th.
Well, I think that, one, if, if it, the most we can start at the, at the quarter and be full back in, I think that is one important piece to this because of the change that is going to occur. The reason I, I think that the hybrid model is beneficial in starting at the, in the first quarter is because there is going to be a lot of transition that's going to occur for the large number of students that are currently in-person to virtual. And starting back as it relates to schedules, seeing their teachers in, in person, being on campus, what are the rules and the structures that are set up? That's more of what I'm wondering, wondering what's going to be if you come back right at the quarter and then they're trying to do all that, there might be some time lost. As I mentioned prior, there's going to be disruption, whether there's disruption now before the second quarter at, or at the beginning of the second quarter because you're trying to get all this newness of seventh graders never being on campus, ninth graders never being on campus, things of that nature. Some of those things are gonna, are going to occur whenever. And so my thought of the hybrid prior to the quarter was to really work on that transition of what it is to, to have school in the sense of coming in person, so that when you get to second quarter, you're starting afresh and you're just moving forward right into your courses and your classes with your teachers and moving forward.
I mean, I'm still uncomfortable, but you know, I don't know. That's all I got.
Ms. Love, what I would say though is, is with looking at, knowing that, to, to start with, to answer your question, I guess, a little more is, I like the transition of being able to get into the second quarter, but I think it is so important with everything that has to, to occur in moving into the second quarter and students moving and, and them hitting the ground, running in the sense of being prepared in the second quarter. I think what's most important is that we are back at second quarter.
Okay. I did have another question and it just like, like left my mind. It was something in response to like, what, oh, I guess like, I think I had seen that Kyrene for their students, like they're, I think maybe it's six or something, they're doing like a orientation at the, is it the beginning of the second quarter? I could be getting it wrong. Is that something that we could do with our, our secondary?
That might be something they're doing. We normally have our, our days where we bring students in and I don't know why, it's fleeting in my mind right now, Link Crew, sorry. So we have a number of things that we normally do with our students that would have happened already for students getting acclimated to school where they're connecting. So there's ways, schools are still trying to do some of that virtually, but you know, when you can actually have students in small groups and actually spread out and getting them back to campus, I know our stu, our schools are waiting for that. They've been asking and I'm like, everybody needs to hold. So I think they're really wanting to get students set up to be able to come on campus to see what's going on with the mitigation and protocols, of course, with that. But once, once they have the opportunity and if the board so chooses that, that we can do that, we can start preparing some of those things for our students.
And when would be the exact, the optimum, not optimum, time to do that for, for seniors? To be involved with a bunch of students getting oriented to a new, a new environment a week before finals, when those grades are critical to them for transcripts and for getting into college? So I, I mean, if you're looking at the 14th or the 21st, that's the worst possible time for somebody who is taking a high stakes final to move to the, into the next quarter where they're already applying for college. So again, disruption, I mean, it doesn't get any worse than that.
So are we, Mr. Evans, would you state, restate which, restate your motion or, or review it, I guess? It's not restate, but review.
Okay, I moved to, to at the elementary level, go begin on the staggered, was that the right word?
Yes.
Staggered opening for pre-K through two, beginning September 14th and then bringing in more students on September 21st and then moving to whatever the metrics would hold, if that makes you more comfortable, Mrs. Brunner? Which is what I, option C, but it's really what, where the metrics allow us to go to.
In positivity.
Yes. Yeah, okay. And then in terms of secondary, seven through 12, return in person October 13th. According to positivity metrics.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and do roll call vote. I'll start at this end, this time. Mrs. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Love?
No.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. Mosden, yes?
No.
Motion carries. So I guess the last question on, on this is, as we start working towards all this, I certain, and I probably should have asked this previously, but do we have enough time to put all the bus drivers, food service individuals, order the food and things like that and have all that in place in time for September 14th? We will be ready. Thank you. Madam President? You have an information item and it's probably going to take a good 45 minutes maybe. I was going to say you, you've been here six hours. Would you mind if we move that information item to next Wednesday? You have a board meeting. And Mrs. Cooper is prepared, we could forward it then. This is on our social emotional learning. I do know. Yes, it was a request of Mrs. Brunner to kind of give an update and we'd be glad to, to wait a bit since it's getting late and I know you've been here for several hours. I would agree to that. We can, we can table this information item until the next meeting. Do I? It wasn't a voting issue, it was just an update. Ms. Brunner, are you?
That's fine, thank you.
Thank you. I guess we'll then move on to superintendent comments.
I want to thank Mr. Narducci and, and Dr. Gilbert. The whole team spent hours and it was a challenge to say the least with all the thousands of emails, the comments. I thank the board for the, the recommendation and we will move forward. We have had instances where families have reached out to us in the high school arena that their kids are struggling and a couple instances today where the principal is taking them under their wing and offer them some, some one-on-one contact with teachers and I think we'll just pursue that and see how we can get some of our high school young people. people together and orient them in the school, and, and again, try to make them feel as though it's a possibility, that it's coming, and not being so desperate. So, and we'll look forward, I know the elementary principals are on board, and we do owe our teachers a lot more communication. Hopefully, if they watch this whole presentation with what Terry Locke presented in terms of our, the PPE and, and Mrs. Hartley, hopefully, they've learned a little bit more. This has all been on the website, but it's probably a novel if you went through and read it all, with all the Q and As, and all the directions, and the information, and the postings, and the studies. And we need to do more visually. Lindsay is making a video right now, trying to do a, a visual of what are the precautions, what are the expectations, and how can we support the staff. So I thank the staff, just for their patience. I thank the many support staff and administrators that have been working, many since March. The vast majority have been on duty since July. And the teachers have just been knocking it out of the park, working many, many hours to get our virtual and our online academy working well. We still have some challenges. I thank the parents who have taken the time to send us those heartfelt emails, both sides of the issue, and the pictures, and they've all been read, and I think you can tell by listening to the board that you've been heard. It's just been a very challenging issue to navigate, but we thank the, the parents for hanging in with us and believing in Chandler Schools, the staff for believing in Chandler Schools, and if we stand firm, we'll get through this. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Castillo. Are there any comments from board members? If not, I'll just make a couple. I want to thank Dr. Gilbert, Mr. Narducci, the rest of the staff here today for all the hard work with putting this, the whole program together. I know it was a lot of work and a lot of different options, and I appreciate you bringing the various options to the board so that we can, we can look at them and realize that, you know, many people were involved with, with all of this. And through your leadership, you were able to help refine those options into a really comprehensible, a very comprehensive document. I also want to thank all of the people who have sent me and the rest of the board, I guess, emails. I know that I have spent many, many hours over the last several weeks reading all of your emails, all, all of the things that you had to say. It's what we should do. It's what we need to do. And I truly appreciate that you are willing to reach out to us to let us know your thoughts and your concerns, and know that we, we are listening. So, thank you so much, and I will adjourn the meeting. Have a great evening.